Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Regular Board Meeting. Today is February the 22nd. It is 5:25 PM. And first, I would like to welcome our special guest, Mayor Robert Wonderlich, and our Chief, Mark Stainbrook, as well as Giarn... So sorry, I just lost your name. Husenjian. So, welcome to our meeting today. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Mayor Bob Wonderlich if he would lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, President Wells. It's very good to be here today. Would everybody please join me in starting the meeting today by pledging allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wonderlich. May I have approval for the agenda, a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
All second.
The motion was made by Rochelle Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot. All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
We were informed earlier that the CCAC report is being postponed. Should we table it at that point or remove it from the agenda now?
We can remove it from the agenda now? Okay. All those in favor?
Can we amend the motion to approve the agenda minus item 17A?
Rochelle?
Rochelle, do you accept that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? The motion passes 5-0 with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. The next item, Dr. Bregge, do we have a report from closed session?
Yes, President Wells. In closed session, the board took action to notify the temporary certificated employee identified by employee number KB4703522 that the employee will be released from the temporary contract effective June 3rd, 2022, and non-re-elected for the 2022-2023 school year and directed the superintendent or designated to send out appropriate legal notices. The vote, 5 to 0, unanimous.
Thank you very much. Next up is our student spotlight, and Dr. Bregge, would you like to introduce?
Yes, and for our late start today, I'll turn this right over. Our celebration to Assistant Principal Kim Decutrelle, who is with us on Zoom to do the honors.
It's gonna be me tonight.
Oh, Mr. Mead. Nice to see you.
You too, Dr. Bregge.
Great to see you.
Having me, everybody? So, yeah, this is an exciting one. We're gonna be recognizing our National Merit finalists. So, if you could please join me. First, I want to wish everyone a good evening, President Wells, members of the board, Dr. Bregge, District Administration, and our Beverly Hills community. So, I'm joining you this evening to introduce some amazing students. But I'd first like to take a moment to thank our exceptional teaching faculty, our incomparable counseling team, Kristy Vaughn, Kathleen Blanco, Janice Hart, Greg Jackson, and Ye Jing Nam, for their tireless dedication and support for our students and scholars. Also, a special thank you to Ms. Casey Barnison, our beloved college counselor, for coordinating the National Merit program. So, we are excited to recognize four academically talented, top-scoring seniors for the class of 2022 at Beverly Hills High School. These students have been recognized as National Merit finalists. Now, what does that mean? These students have exemplified incredible scholarly merit, and their achievements are ones to celebrate. To provide a little context to their outstanding efforts, it all begins with 1.5 million students who take the PSAT, which, by the way, we're gonna be doing very soon at the high school. And they take the PSAT and the National Merit Scholarship qualifying test in their junior year. So, out of those 1.5 million students, some 50,000 of the highest scores qualify for recognition in the National Merit Scholarship. Now, of those 50,000, about 16,000, or approximately 1/3 of those, qualify semifinalists, and then finally, 15,000 become finalists. So, it's incredibly difficult and rigorous. So, our four students who are going to recognize tonight, and once I'm done, I'm gonna actually have to restate a real quick answer to what is the secret of their success, and just so you can kind of see their faces, hear their voices. Our four National Merit finalists are Maya Goldcorn, Sarah Lepkowitz, Ethan Stone, and Tian Yang. Without a doubt, we're incredibly excited to see the mountains that these four students will climb and the things they will achieve as they begin their journey upon graduation and as they enter higher education. So, real quick, hopefully this is gonna work, if Maya Goldcorn, can you unmute yourself and tell us a secret of your success?
Sure, thank you. I would say my one piece of advice is to make time to read for fun. That's something that's been really helpful for standardized testing and just in general. It's a really fun thing.
That's great, Maya. Thanks. And Sarah, how about you?
I wouldn't say that it's good to create a studying schedule, but also, you know, to feel supported, talk to your friends about the process, too, because we're all, you know, going through it together.
That's great. Ethan, you out there?
I am out there. I guess I would say that, you know, something that was important for me is just getting that great night of sleep beforehand, having a good breakfast, a good meal, just a day of, so that, you know, your body is just as ready as your mind, you know? It's a full...
Thanks, Ethan.
...effort.
That's great. And Tian?
I would say that generally, it's just about studying consistently and thoroughly throughout, not just like in preparation for the PSAT, but just in your education as a whole, paying attention in class, studying consistently beforehand rather than cramming. All that good stuff.
That's awesome. Well, thanks to the four of you. Thank you for representing the class of 2022, and thank you to the Beverly Hills High School, and congratulations on another great year for National Merit Finals.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mark. I'd like to go around and allow you all a chance to speak. Eli, would you like to start?
Sure. My mic was a little hot before, but I think it's fixed, maybe. But, yeah, they... The four of them are some of my closest friends at school. I was with Ethan for more than half of the weekend, this weekend, so it's truly fantastic to see them being recognized up there, because I know that they are very good representatives of our class as a whole, and it's really something special that they've achieved. So, congratulations. Thank you, guys, for being here, and thank you for representing both the senior class and the high school.
Thank you, Eli. Mr. Halimi?
First of all, I'm very sorry for not being there tonight. I am on a business trip in Cleveland that was pre-scheduled, so hello, everybody. To these fantastic students, congratulations. My quick back-of-the-envelope math tells me that you're in the top 1% of those that applied, the 15,000 out of 1.5 million, which is unbelievable, considering, I'm sure, those 1.5 million that went through this are already some of the top achieving students. So, I know that you're only gonna continue to shine brighter and brighter, and thank you for making us all proud.
Thank you, Gabe. Mrs. Marcus?
I just want to echo Mr. Halimi's words, that I am so proud of you four students and what you have achieved, and I only wish you all the best of luck as you go forward, because I think we can look forward to some wonderful things from you in the future. So, again, Mazel Tov and congratulations.
Dr. Stern?
Just a big congratulations. You guys make us really proud. Thank you.
Very impressed, as usual. Maya, I loved your comment about reading for enjoyment. So often, we forget that books have a purpose beyond homework, and it's such an important message to impress upon our youth that reading isn't evil. It's a good thing. So, thank you for sharing that.
I agree, Mr. Margot. I would say that I am certain that your success is attributable to very many things, but what I'd really love to hear is the distillation of make time to read, create a schedule, how important sleep is, and the consistency with your study habits. And I think that's something that we all can take to heart in all our lives, and something that I know myself as a parent is something that we've probably all have parroted many times. So, you're a great testament to that, and thank you very much. Dr. Bregge?
Yes, I'd like to offer my congratulations as well. These last couple of years especially, we've thrown about every challenge and obstacle your way, and this really says a lot about you as a student and also about the teachers and what is happening in our classrooms. So, it's really a celebration, 360 celebration with you as students, your teachers, and also your family. So, congratulations.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the accommodations and recognition, and it gives me great pleasure tonight to introduce the new Beverly Hills Chief of Police, Mark Stainbrook, and to introduce our mayor, Mayor Bob Wonderlich, so that he can introduce Mark properly. Welcome.
Thank you. And one more time where we need somebody to introduce the person who's doing the introducing, so I'm going to be brief. But Chief Mark Stainbrook did recently join us. It's been a very busy initial time period for Mark, and so many in our community already do know him, but it's an opportunity to introduce him formally to the members of the board, President Wells and all the other members of the board, and Superintendent Bregge. And so, the chief is joining us from the San Diego Port area, where he was the Chief of Police for the San Diego Port. Previously, he has a long history in law enforcement. He was with LAPD before, and that included a substantial amount of time in the West Los Angeles area, so already did know our community. In addition, Chief Stainbrook had a long history in the military, I think, is it 32 years, ending as a Colonel in the Marine Corps Reserves, service in Baghdad, service for the State Department in a variety of cities around the world, consulting on terrorism initiatives, homeland security, a variety of other areas of policing. And so, Chief Stainbrook comes to us very well-accomplished, with a huge amount of policing experience, and then in his three or so months here, he's already gained an additional amount of considerable experience. He certainly had to hit the ground running. I will tell you that from what I hear from the community, there's universal admiration for the chief, for the job that the police has done during his approximately three months here, and so I'm very happy to be able to formally introduce Chief Mark Stainbrook. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. That's always such a nice introduction, but I'll just tell you, I come to you tonight also as a parent. I have an 18-year-old daughter, and I have a 16-year-old son who are in high school. And as the Chief of Police, first, I'd like you to know I'm accessible to all of you, all the board members, all the parents, our community. I certainly have had a quick start. We've had a quick start. The city council's been amazingly supportive of me, of the police department, our city manager, George Chavez, and the city staff have helped so much. And I have been able to have some key meetings with Dr. Bregge, Board President Wells, our PTA, and my juvenile detectives and school resource officers. So, I do really think it's important for us to build those relationships early. There already have been some issues that we've worked on and talked about, and had some successes with COVID testing and screening. We were able to set up some good things. So, I'm looking forward to meeting everyone, all the principals that I haven't met so far, and other people in the district very much. Looking forward to our collaborative relationship, especially with the security staff here and all the teachers. You know, unfortunately, as a police officer, sometimes we're always dealing with the bad issues and young people and older people that do bad things, and I love hearing what your students are doing and all the great things they're doing, and the amazing respect and admiration they have for their teachers and staff, because I certainly have those same fond memories of my school and my teachers. I'm not gonna go on too much longer, but I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns or anything that's on your mind.
Thank you very much, too, Stainbrook. I'm gonna start with Mr. Raymer.
Thank you for coming to see us today. I've heard so many great things about you so far, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what you do for the city as a whole, and just very excited to see what you've done so far. So, just thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Halimi?
Hello, Chief Stainbrook. Thank you so much. I'm sorry I couldn't be there with you tonight. Just wanted to start by saying thank you for your service to our country and now to our great city. We're lucky to have you, and, you know, this police department is a big reason why, you know, many of us live in this city. We have wonderful schools, we have wonderful services, and, you know, the police department is a big part of that. So, thank you for continuing the legacy and looking forward to working with you, not just in the troubling times, but on great things as well. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I just want to welcome you to Beverly Hills, and we're thrilled that we've been able to pick something so terrific for our police department. I hear nothing but rave reviews from you, and I'm hoping that when our paths cross, it will be for everything that is good.
Thank you.
I'd just like to thank you so much for your service. Definitely, I love this town because we do have a dedicated fire department, police department, great school district, but it's wonderful to hear your background, and thank you for your service to our country and for making us all a little safer. Thank you.
That would be redundant, but thank you, and I appreciate you introducing yourself to our school community and making them feel comfortable as being as approachable as you are. And thank you to Mayor Wonderlich and the city council for bringing in the chief.
Well, I just would like to say how excited I am that you have joined our beautiful city and that you're partnering with our school district. I really look forward to working with you on this board and representing our school district, and I've seen you make the rounds around town and to all the different community groups, and agree, everyone has had such a wonderful response to you. I'm sure you feel like you've been here for I'm sure you feel like you've been here for years already.
I do, actually, yes.
And that it may seem a little odd being introduced at this point, but I can say that I really, um, have had a lot of respect for, um, your great start so far and, um, really look forward to your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
My thanks as well for a good first meeting, although we've met, uh, several times already at, at some events. Um, I always judge after kind of that first meeting, um, how it went, when at the end I said, um, I think it's really important that we switch cell phones. And you were right up there giving that to me and we switched cell phones and that really means a lot to me, um, for you to be that approachable and that accessible. Um, and that was a great first start. And so thank you very much for, uh, trusting that, that, uh, relationship because it's really going to be important. We've always had an excellent relationship and look forward to continuing that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else?
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for making the time. Okay, the next item on our agenda is staff presentations and we are going to have a demographic study presentation. And here is Mr. Roach.
Thank you, President Wells, members of the board. In order to really craft an accurate budget, to estimate the number of staff we need at our campuses, to develop our facilities plan, we really need to know how many students are going to come to school each year. So tonight I'm happy to introduce to you, uh, Ms. King Iceman, Mr. Murray from King Consulting, to go over the latest demographic report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roach. And actually, I'm pretty. Uh, would just be me, Rob Murray. I am the Director of Demographics and Planning at King Consulting. Uh, worked this year with the district to prepare the full, uh, demographic analysis and enrollment projections report, uh, which covers a lot more information than what I'm going to go over tonight. This will definitely be kind of the highest, uh, points and most important information that leads to that kind of that bottom line that we were just talking about of what is the enrollment outlook, uh, over the next several years. And so, uh, let's see, is there a presentation that's up on the screen there or do I need to share my screen here?
So, Mr. Murray, I'm going to give you access to share your screen. Hold on for one second.
Okay, of course. So while we're working that out, uh, but then as I said, while I won't be covering everything that's in the full report that was prepared, uh, certainly happy to dig in and answer questions and go into all kinds of detail on some of this information that we'll be covering.
Mr. Murray, can you try to share your screen?
Yes, looks like we're set up for that now, so. Uh, just a moment here and I have that up. So hopefully, uh, everyone can now see that presentation. See, am I still coming through?
Not yet.
Okay. Yeah, everything on my end unfortunately, uh, seems to have frozen up. But if I can still hear me, uh, then I can at least, uh, let me see here. Um, I can go ahead and, uh, try to stop sharing for a moment. So apologies, uh, might be having some internet issues on my end of the, uh, meeting here. But.
Mr. Murray, we can, uh, since it's attached to the agenda, we can share it from here, we believe.
Why don't we go ahead and count on that? Again, apologies for whatever, uh, technical mishaps we're having and, uh, hopefully just on my end, everything will, uh, unfreeze, but I'm at least just going to go ahead and, uh, can just, uh, can pull it up. Oh, there we go, I think. See, but let me go ahead and just pull up the presentation separately out of what I'm trying to share. There we go. Okay, uh, I've quit sharing and things seem to be back online on my end. So if you have it, uh, shared separately there, I'll go ahead and begin. So thank you for your patience while we worked all that out. And so again, as I said, with this, uh, overview, as we get past the first couple of introductory slides, uh, there we go, I say, I see that now. So, uh, we can go ahead and move to the next one, please. Uh, we'll do a quick summary here. So the overview, uh, Beverly Hills Unified, uh, kind of peaked at enrollment way back in oh seven, oh eight. And since that time has been in a pattern of decreasing enrollment. And the primary cause of this, and I'll go ahead and say this for the first of a few times tonight, uh, is really the local demographics and there are just fewer school-aged children who live in and near the district. This is not just a Beverly Hills problem. This is a LA County, this is the state of California, such a challenge that a lot of other public school districts are working against. Uh, but basically every time that you have, uh, a new cohort that enters with you, uh, with kindergarten or increasingly transitional kindergarten and it's fewer kids than the seniors who graduated the year before, that's just a built-in enrollment decrease that happens every year until that pattern changes. And for a while now, you've just had progressively smaller and smaller cohorts coming into the system. So regardless of some of those offsetting factors, and there are some, uh, it's still just a big, uh, kind of set hill to get over when you have that built-in decrease that's just primed to happen, uh, just based on the difference in those class sizes that happens over a spread of thirteen years. That said, so we have those incoming versus outgoing cohorts, but we are going to look at, there is some residential development that is occurring again for Beverly Hills at a pace that far exceeds, uh, what the city has been used to seeing in recent history. So that will have some effect. And then, as I also alluded to and will explain more fully, transitional kindergarten, uh, sort of serving, uh, students who start the year at four years old is expanding. There is a, uh, state push to have universal transitional kindergarten by twenty twenty-five. So I'll show you what that looks like. And then lastly, we won't go into a huge amount of detail on this, but we'll touch on the fact that there is potential uh, for the district to enroll more of the students who actually live within the district. Uh, and that could be something that could affect future enrollment. So we can go ahead and move to the next slide. So a quick look at this district and community demographics. So the first one will be some historical enrollment trends. And what we have here is the last decade. So this doesn't even go back to that peak in oh seven, but just in this last decade, since the twenty twelve, thirteen school year, uh, you see that just steady persistent decrease in enrollment. Uh, that's about a thirty percent decrease over that ten-year period. Uh, and when you look at it split apart by grade level, this is important to do, uh, because when you see grade level, uh, enrollment growing in certain areas while it's declining overall, that gives you insight into what's happening with some of those, uh, kind of bubbles of cohorts moving through where you have kind of a boom of births that makes a big cohort and then as it passes through, things slow down. And in your case, really since twenty fifteen, you've just been seeing, uh, generally that decreasing enrollment across all grade levels. And again, it's just that idea of every new cohort that comes in is a bit smaller than the one that came before it. And as they all just march year by year through the grades, uh, each year, you just have smaller cohorts taking the place of the previous year's larger cohorts. And that's just happening across kindergarten through twelfth grade. If you can go ahead and move to the next slide, please. Uh, and then just kindergarten is a good place to look at this. So again, you have your transitional kindergarten up on top. We're going to be touching on that. Uh, that one has been a bit more stable, but with your actual kindergarten enrollment, uh, from getting, uh, in kind of the mid two hundreds at the start of this decade-long look back, uh, now in the last four years particularly, uh, you're just seeing, uh, much smaller groups coming in. Now, the twenty twenty slash twenty-one school year, uh, which is kind of the real teeth of the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, that one we take with a grain of salt. We know that, uh, there's a reason that one was so much lower than everything else. But even in the couple of years before that, you can just see that there had just been, again, these particularly even smaller cohorts coming into your district. And that just makes it, uh, you know, hard to grow off of that base. We can go to the next slide. And this is kind of what we're talking about in terms of the population that resides in your school district. Uh, if you just look at the population number comparing the twenty-ten and the twenty-twenty census, which some of the high-level data for that is out and available, uh, you see the population decrease and it doesn't necessarily register as strongly as when you just break it out by population over and under eighteen. You see that literally the over eighteen population has been fairly consistent over the last twenty years. It is literally entirely in the population under eighteen that your district's general civilian population has seen that decrease occur. And that is just that the, uh, you know, people who are moving into the area are not necessarily the younger families with school-aged children. And as there are fewer children available to enroll, we'll get into on the next slide, uh, one of the other big factors, uh, which is regionally, uh, there are a fair number of private and charter schools. And you see on the top one, and this is not just private schools located within your district, but in also some nearby zip codes. Uh, but what you see is that that private school enrollment, there are some fluctuations, but it's holding fairly steady. So while the overall available number of school-aged children is decreasing, uh, if a constant number enroll in private schools, and you see there have been some new charter high schools that have opened in the last several years, uh, it just means there are fewer and fewer children, uh, in the graves that your district serves who are even available to enroll with you. And then we'll get into some of the more specifics about that. But that is kind of the big demographic, dim, excuse me, demographic backdrop in what the district, uh, is experiencing lately. Uh, so we can go to the next slide, please. So before we really get into all of the things with cohorts and, uh, how we build up the enrollment projection, one of those offsetting factors was looking at development and how we gauge the impact that development's going to have is by what we call student generation rates. Or basically for any number of new residential units that are built, how many students do you really think are going to live in them? And so we can go to the next slide for how we really do that is we look at recently built units that are in your district and see, you know, this year with your actual students, how many live there on a per-unit basis? And really in your district, we're talking about two primary types of housing, which is single-family attached, which are units that are for sale and that are owned by the occupants. But again, in this case, attached meaning things like condominiums, like row housing, uh, but things that typically involve little to no of your own private yard and sharing walls with some neighbors. And then you have multifamily, which tends to be rental apartments. And on, and those would be entirely the kinds of housing that are proposed to be built over the next several years as of now. And so you, what you see with the single-family attached is that that point one-two-one, uh, TK twelve, that means for a hundred units that are built, you would expect about twelve students to live in them. So you, when you just look at unit counts, you can see some kind of eye-popping numbers that you have to keep in mind. And this bears with some of that census data we were just looking at. You're not necessarily going to get, uh, you know, anything close to a student out of each of those units. And then with the multifamily housing, it's even lower. So next slide, please. Just take a quick look. Now, these are in coordinating with the City of Beverly Hills, uh, planning agencies, uh, projects that are somewhere in the development pipeline right now. We have all the full build-out schedules for, uh, these work into the projections. Uh, but out of these five hundred and ninety-three units that, uh, everyone seems fairly confident are going to be built uh, over the next several years, uh, based on those student generation rates, we think that will equate to about seventy additional students, which certainly does help to offset some of the other, uh, beginning built-in potential for that enrollment decrease. Uh, and that will be factored into the projections. And then we can just show you on the next map, uh, where those developments are. And it's also important while we're looking at this to acknowledge, uh, in the city's, uh, uh, most recent housing element update, uh, there was a substantial increase to the city's regional housing needs allocation. And that certainly lays the framework for the city to do some rezoning, uh, to make the potential for units to be constructed higher. But until there are projects that specifically plan to build X number of units of this type, uh, then that's something that we can revisit, uh, down the road every couple of years to get a sense of when maybe that, uh, allocation of more housing that the planning department helps facilitate might translate into projects and into units and therefore into some kids down the road. So next slide, please. And now the actual enrollment projection. So one of the big factors that we're looking at with this, and we can go to the next slide, please, is your local births. And so just between two thousand and twenty twenty, uh, the local births, uh, with a few higher points in between, but decreased by about seventeen percent. And I think most importantly, three of the last four years, and I can actually say the full twenty twenty-one births are out and they came in at three oh seven, so even lower than twenty twenty. So now four of the last five years are at record low levels. And these are kids that haven't even reached you yet for TK in kindergarten. So we can already see how things are shaping up in terms of, again, it's just the availability of school-aged children for you to enroll. And so we can go ahead and move to the next slide. And now here's, uh, where I mentioned a little bit with that potential, uh, for then, while the number of students who live in your district has been decreasing, we also look at how many of them who are born and live in your district are enrolling with BHUSD schools. And so, uh, going back a little further in history, usually between fifty and sixty percent, if you just take the births in a given year and then look at five years later, how many kindergarten students you have, uh, would be enrolling over more recent history. Again, we kind of throw out the twenty twenty year, uh, when COVID really just kind of threw a wrench in everyone's, uh, statistics. But it's really been more between forty and fifty percent now. Uh, your transitional kindergarten enrollment, as we saw, was more stable. Uh, but that whole program is about to change significantly. But again, this just really highlights that there is, uh, perhaps some opportunity, uh, for the district, uh, if more of the students who lived here were to enroll with you, uh, enrollment could increase. But again, these have been, uh, aside from kind of a shift, uh, that's happened more recently, but fairly stable with what that ratio is. And we know that the births have been decreasing. So next slide, please. So we won't, uh, go into all the details on this, but, uh, the full year or kind of words, being called now Universal Transitional Kindergarten. Up until now, uh, Transitional Kindergarten dates back to twenty twelve, when the state rolled back the, uh, age for kindergarten to start from December first to having to be five by September first. And originally, it was just for those three months, the September, October, November birthdays, uh, who used to be eligible for kindergarten and weren't anymore to have this program. Uh, starting next year, that window of eligibility is set to begin increasing. Now, districts can serve more kids, but the goal from the state is that by twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, every four-year-old is offered the opportunity to enroll in Transitional Kindergarten. Effectively, this makes a new grade, uh, kind of a two-year kindergarten program that starts at, uh, age four with kind of what you would call maybe grade negative two or negative one, and then zero for Kinder and then into first, second, third. Uh, but what that means for your enrollments is that while your situation with every new cohort that comes in being less populous than the one, than the older ones that are leaving your district, you basically get a new whole grade level added on to the front end of that sequence. It's going to grow out over the next few years. So that will certainly help augment, uh, some of those projections. Now on to the next slide, uh, we'll go ahead and look at then, we know what's happening with your kindergarten that's coming in. We know some students are going to be added on to the top of that from residential development. Uh, but on that, of course, you have stu-, uh, people move all the time. You have people moving into and out of your district. It isn't just a magical dome where once you have kids in kindergarten, those exact same kids are with you all the way to grade twelve. What's actually happening is that people are moving in, people are moving out and on net, uh, are you gaining or losing students? And the good news for your enrollments is on net, you tend to gain students. If you take, uh, each of these numbers shows all the students that were grades K to eleven in the previous year, you compare that to your enrollment of all the students in grades first through twelfth the next year, i.e. the students that you would expect would have come back from one year to the next. Uh, you tend to have a net gain every year. But as you can see, again, we throw out twenty twenty because we kind of know what happened, that a lot of students, uh, looked, went elsewhere for that year and then come back in. Uh, but you see that, uh, that positive rate has been decreasing. And so that means increasingly, it's even more important that what's really driving your projection is how, what is the difference in size of the cohorts coming in and the older ones that are going out? So we'll go ahead and move on to the last couple of slides here. Uh, so this is just graphically what's going on with your projected enrollment. Uh, as you see, we, uh, continue decreasing every year. And I'll show you on the next slide, looking at some numbers, why we can say that that is. Uh, so going down and, uh, we can go ahead and show the whole chart there. And apologies, uh, some of the, uh, during the course of PDF, some of the fonts got a little, uh, mixed up. But what you can really see is if you look over at. Uh, mixed up, but what you can really see is if you look over at. The size of each, you know, each cell represents a cohort. And basically as you move over to the right and down, you know, your year night, twenty nineteen, twenty kindergarteners of a hundred and seventy-five became a hundred and sixty-nine. First graders in the next year and then down into the right, a hundred and eighty second graders. Uh, but you see, if you look at your high school cohorts right now, uh, you still have a bunch of cohorts in the high two hundreds and low three hundreds. Uh, you look up towards the top, uh, once you get up above sixth grade in the current year, you have a big shift and everything is in the. Drops to the low two hundreds and even smaller. And that is, again, we've seen there'll be a few students added from development. You tend to on net pick up a few students, uh, year over year. But what's really happening is you're going to be each year have a large cohort of around three hundred students come out. And a smaller cohort of around a hundred and fifty students coming in. And you still have several years of enrollment. And again, if you go back even further, these cohorts used to be even bigger. So you're just still partway through this cycle that's been perpetuating of births have continued to decrease. And you have fewer students coming in. Uh, the good news is towards the end of this, you see, I've, uh, the state. Department of Finance animized projections for births is that they will at least start leveling out for you. And so you see in the out years, your kindergarten, uh, is a little bit more steady. If you look across those rows at the bottom, your TK five, especially thanks to all those extra transitional kindergarten kids. Uh, you're, you're finally going to start stabilizing there, but you have all these older cohorts that are already in your system that are going to matriculate out. And the, the students who are waiting in the wings to come in and take their places, there just aren't as many. So for as long as you still have these older, larger cohorts and until something changes where your new cohorts coming in, uh, start actually increasing in size. Uh, your whole system is still primed, uh, to have decreasing enrollments. And again, the additional transitional kindergarten students, the additional students that will come in from some residential development as of right now are not enough to offset. That. So that is the full picture. I'm happy to answer, uh, any specific questions. Again, there's the full report that has even more information that we didn't even, uh, get into tonight with some mapping and spatial analysis. Uh, but that is what I had prepared to share with you tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Uh, is there anyone that would like to begin? Dr. Stern?
Uh, first of all, Mr. Murray, thank you so much for such, um, interesting, such an interesting and well crafted presentation. I, I took statistics when I was, uh, right out of high school and it was the first time I really thought math really does matter. And it's really interesting and worthwhile and I, I just really enjoyed and was thoroughly engaged in what you had to say. Um, for sure, it's a worrisome situation. I think everything you identify really makes sense and I can see. Um, I can see why the trends are the way you're saying. Can you comment a little bit about the possible shift or the exodus to say, you know, homeschooling? Or, um, students and families starting to prefer the idea of virtual, uh, home-based education? Whether or not it was the catalyst being the pandemic or just, you know, some political divides. But I'd be interested in any, uh, information you have about the trend towards homeschooling and or homeschooling with virtual. Offerings that people can find online in this city.
Oh, and that, and that is a, uh, student observation. That is certainly one thing that we're seeing. Uh, you know, a lot of, uh, districts that I've worked with that are offering their own, at least, uh, fully online programs. They're seeing hundreds of students, uh, signing up for those and perhaps ones that would have gone elsewhere, uh, had that not, uh, been there. But, uh, in general, yes, that, uh, certainly I think that catalyst is the word that you use and that's correct. A lot of families experienced that as the default option in twenty twenty. And, uh, you know, for me and my family, we were thrilled when the opportunity arrived again to have our daughter go back to school in person. But some families absolutely have found that for them, it was, uh, a really exciting possibility, uh, to continue exploring. Uh, even after it wasn't the only option anymore. Uh, there is unfortunately, uh, not the most reliable and consistent data in terms of. Uh, how we're tracking who's actually enrolling in some of these options. Uh, the ones that are at least run through kind of a hub charter school, we can at least get some track on. But, uh, a lot of individual families who are just, uh, moving to homeschooling. Uh, it can be a little hard to quantify. What you can usually do instead is again, track if you start seeing. Uh, kind of an acceleration in some of those enrollment trends, especially with that grade to grade migration that we were looking at. And kind of your net rates of cohort change year over year shifting down. That is a sign that some of those students who had been coming to you are going somewhere else instead.
Thank you.
Another question I have too as well is, we know that the baby boomer population, um, I think makes up a, a good percentage of homeowners. Is that, is that correct? First of all, to say, um, certain cohorts or, or the, the largest cohort is of homeowners are baby boomers or not necessarily?
No, that, that's a good one that I can, uh, certainly parse the census data in that way. To, I mean, to, so I don't want to commit to that, but I think that it sounds like a very plausible, uh, hypothesis. That we could certainly explore, uh, especially as the twenty twenty numbers, uh, come out in a little bit more detail with the full age breakdowns. And some of that, uh, tenancy data of owning versus renting.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Do you want to go around? I'll wait my turn. Okay. Um, thank you. Um, just a couple of quick observations on slide number eight, and I know we took the slides down, but it showed the regional private charter trends. This is something that the district has kind of banged their head against the wall for years, asking for, um, exit surveys. Asking for follow-ups to try to figure out what is it that's, that's having residents with school age children not attend our schools? So, and, and I'm glad you put, you broke it out to private and charter because what, what I can tell. Is that there's pretty much a consistency amongst the private school, schools, which are secular, non-secular. Um, I assume, correct? In your private, yeah. Okay. So parents who make the choice to send their kids. Whether to either high-end, uh, uh, or, or religious schools are pretty consistent. Um, it's this charter school explosion now on the, on the lower bars that I find telling. Because two thousand fourteen is the year we started major construction in the district. And ever since then, construction has escalated, um, multiple sites. And, uh, with a lot of kids being displaced, shifted around and all that. Um, so that brings the question around, uh, do you feel that this chart, uh, the, at least the, the charter, charter school enrollment chart. Is a reflection potentially of the construction program and its effect on the community?
There might be some element to it. I know. Part of this is that we are looking regionally. Again, the, the kind of large charter schools that we're looking at here through the California Department of Education's data. Uh, again, are not located within your district, but nearby. And so in this case, they are pulling not just from you, but from a number of other, uh, regional districts. Uh, and part of that growth that you're seeing, uh, kind of between twenty eleven and twenty sixteen is a couple of new high school charter programs. That were, uh, initially enrolling and then building up that enrollment. But of course, those are students who absent those schools were going somewhere else. And were we able to obtain their student list? We would probably find that at least some of them were coming from Beverly Hills. Uh, in terms of, again, those, uh, that is one of the recommendations we have, and I'm sure that it's not for lack of trying, but continuing to try to do outreach and polling and finding. Uh, specifically the reasons. I will say one thing I saw, uh, with some data is I know at Horace Mann. There had been some modernization revitalization of that school. And when that project was complete, we actually did see there just that school's grade to grade migration bump up. And that's one of the details in the study were assuming when, uh, El Rodeo opens. That, uh, and the Hawthorne students move into there, uh, I've built in based on what happened at Horace Mann, a similar bump. Uh, of, uh, you know, some students coming back to the Beverly Hills Unified facilities. Once they are modernized and rea-, and opened again.
So in your, not just in our district, but in other districts that you have, have done these demographics for. Do you notice a correlation between, um, districts reopening, um. New buildings or remodeling buildings and enrollment, um, increasing?
Broadly, yeah. I mean. Something that, uh, particularly when it is something that's highly, you know, that has that curb appeal and that visual appeal to families, uh, you know. Of course, there is so, so much of the success of the school, uh, is much, much more than facilities. But there's always, I think, a perception with a lot of families that. The nicer the facility is, the better the education. And so you will see when a new school opens, when a, uh, big modernization project is completed. Uh, you will have some people, uh, either coming to the district just for that. Or even trying to switch from one school to another because they really, really want to get their kid into the newest, shiniest school around.
Okay. Uh, so, so that's, thank you, because I think that's something that is, um, definitely relates to what is currently happening with our district and our program. Um, the other thing obviously is the success of the academic programs. Um, you know, being a basic aid district, we, we struggle with this idea of we would love to have more people, but we don't need to have more people. But we want to have the ability for people, you know, to, to, we want bragging rights, right? You want to be able to, to be able to be the kind of school that, that enrollment becomes a problem. Um, in the future. So I think, um, to that, to that, Dr. Breggy, um, we should be vigilant as a board. And, and really looking closely at why people are not enrolling here if we can. You know, even if we get a small sampling, um, we don't have to do everybody. And then what can we do? You know, how can we address this, um, as, as the, um. The strategic plan begins to move into its final phases as the pandemic comes to an end. What do we need to do on, on, on a district-wide basis to get, to attract those families? Or at least make them think twice about not enrolling, right? That's, that should be the end game in all this. You know, we'll, we will open the new buildings, we'll open El Rodeo and the high school and hopefully the construction program will be seen through and finished. And we'll have a high school worthy of people who see the physical plant as one of the factors in choosing a school, right? That's, that's something that people do tour and they look at schools. Um, hopefully we'll have all that. So then it's the other elements that we're going to have to make sure are in place, what's happening inside those buildings. So, thank you very much, sir.
Mrs. Marcus?
Well, I have to tell you, that was a really a great presentation and a very comprehensive one to give us a picture. Of what I almost believe is a little more bleak in a, in a way. I see our numbers dwindling. Uh, I noticed that, um, the enrollment, I'm not sure which slide it was, um, three thousand one hundred and fifty students this year. And looking down the line, I think five more years from now, you had a number of twenty four hundred and eighty. And that to me represents six hundred and sixty-nine students, uh, or six hundred and sixty-nine students according to my mathematics. And that's a tremendous loss of students. No matter how many we're bringing in at the lower grades and how many are leaving at the upper grades. We're losing six hundred and sixty-nine students if the projections are correct. To me, that's a real challenge. And the challenge will be how to get classes and, and offer classes with fewer numbers. So that every child will still have the opportunities that they have today that they may not have in the future. And so I do think there is to be a way that we need to bring in more students, however it can be. So that we can keep these classes, uh, really, uh, I, I, I go back to the days when I was teaching. Smaller classes to me were a disaster. I wanted a robust class of, not bursting at the seams, but with a, a, a critical mass of students. So you could have a really a wonderful class to work with. So I, um, this is a challenge to the administration and what's going to come forward. Because I see this as a very difficult problem in the future. Um, I don't know how much the residential units will really in effect create a lot more housing at this point. It's still a far distance away for these buildings to be built to give us some impact of new housing. So, uh, I, I again, thank you very much for your presentation and I look forward. To, uh, hearing from some of the other members of the, the board. And, um, I think that's about it for me now.
Thank you, Rochelle. Mr. Halemi?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Murray, thank you for the, for the comprehensive, uh, presentation. And I spent some time with, uh, the long form version of the, of a report, which was, uh, a lot more comprehensive. So, uh, thank you for that. Um, I, I hear my, uh, colleague, Mr. Margot about, uh, potential correlation with construction. Let's just, let's just put that aside for a second. I do want to better understand. The data with respect to, um, the charter schools. Uh, so are, are, how are we pulling that data? Cause I couldn't really understand it from the comprehensive report either. Are we specifically looking at coming from like the zip codes? In Beverly Hills and people, you know, not, like, how, how, how accurate is that to actually understand whether those are Beverly Hills kids? Or is that a general trend in Southern California that people are going more to charter schools? Can you just explain how that data was collected?
Of course. And, uh, so what you're seeing here, uh, is the, uh, charts that include schools located. Uh, not just in Beverly Hills, but in some surrounding zip codes. And I list all of the ones that we did, but generally, uh, kind of anything within, not just a pure buffer, but kind of a set distance of the, of the three Beverly Hills zip codes. Uh, but you have a private school chart that's in the full study that's not shown, uh, here tonight of just the trends of the private schools. That are actually physically located within your district, which probably correlates much more strongly, uh, with. Your, uh, you know, students that would be, uh, most likely, you know, be much more likely to be students who would live in your district. I think the main factor with the, uh, bigger regional private school is that some of these schools do probably pull. Uh, students from, you know, a fairly wide range around them, which might reach into you. Uh, again, it pretty much involves, uh, being very nice and asking very nicely for those, uh, schools to share. Uh, you know, something of how many of your students are from Beverly Hills. And sometimes they will, some schools are more open than others to just sharing some of that information. In this case, we didn't dig all the way into trying to find exactly how many Beverly Hills students are, are, uh, coming to each of these schools. What we were really looking at with the private schools, uh, was just that emphasis that during a period where Beverly Hills USD and most other public school districts. In Los Angeles County are seeing, uh, steep and consistent decreasing enrollment trends. The private schools have been, kind of reached that level where they can maintain their enrollment. And so that was just more, uh, one that just emphasizes that, uh, kind of on top of what you're seeing. With the reduction in population of the school age children. That there seems to be a fairly steady demographic that, um, seems inclined. To enroll in the private schools. And then we looked at the same area for the charter schools. Now there are none of these independent charter schools that at least I found any record of that were operating within Beverly Hills USD. And these are all just enrollments that are taken from the state of California's, uh, big enrollment database online called Data Quest. Uh, which the current year numbers should be published sometime usually by April. So that chart only goes up to last year. Uh, but, but same thing, we found the charter schools that were close enough to your district that it's. You know, again, we're not at all saying that all of these enrollments are coming from Beverly Hills because that, that quite clearly they're not. But, uh, certainly I, I would be quite surprised if there weren't some Beverly Hills students who are going into these programs, just given the proximity. And in this, in case with the charter high school programs, uh, given the growth that we've seen over the last decade.
Wouldn't they have to get some kind of an inter-district permit or something to attend a charter school? Because a charter is still a LAUSD, correct?
It's still a public school, but that is one of the wrinkles in the situation is that students going to a charter. Do not have to be released by their home district. If, uh, uh, a, an inter-district transfer to another public school district, uh, you do have to release those. And I did request that information. There are very, very few students leaving Beverly Hills USD to enroll with another. Non-charter, just public school district. So while charter schools are public schools, they do not have the same rule of. Having to only, or having to have their enro-, enrolled students released from their home district.
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, personally, we can, we can speculate and it's not, it's not for this time and place. But I would, I would challenge the notion, I, I think just instinctually that people would be leaving Beverly Hills to go to a nearby charter school. I, 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 you know, I just, I don't, I don't see it, but it is interesting to see that the, that, that the private schools are generally holding. You know, steady on their, uh, enrollment. I also did find it interesting, the stat you had on page 15, that generally we used to get about 50 to 60% of the kids that lived in, you know, the Beverly Hills Unified School District, you know, to territory, call it, and now, you know, we're looking at closer to 40, 50%. I think that's, I think that's very telling, because, you know, irrespective of population decline of school-aged kids in the city, we know that less kids that live in the city, less of them are going to school here, period, right? And I, it, 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 you know, for me, it's, it's, it's less about, okay, well, it's the same amount of dollars we're bringing in, and therefore, you know, maybe we shouldn't be as bothered by it. To me, it's about having vibrant neighborhoods and vibrant communities, you know, spending time with the people that live around you and going to school with them. It's going to overall create a more positive, you know, experience for our, our kids in our communities, and that's why it's, it's troubling to me. But the last question I have was actually on page 10. I'm glad, I'm glad that this is still up. I think it's up for Rebecca that's scrolling, so thank you for that. I really couldn't understand, I don't know, I don't know if the rest of my board members could, I really couldn't really understand this data. So can you, can, can you explain it one more time? You're saying out of a, a hundred, just please, if you can explain it again.
No, no, I'd be happy to. So, single-family attached, so really kind of condo developments going forward, and so, so how we try to get a handle on how many students you'll get out of new development, we look at recently-built units. And so, in this case, yeah, we, we surveyed recently-constructed condo projects, and there have been some, and some of these have been a kind of, you know, some infill, none of them are the, you know, certainly anything like the Beverly Hills One project that'll be 300-something units all in one go, but looking at recently-built units. And so in this case, and the, the full report has the exact numbers that we surveyed, and then, but the ratio is the important thing. So each unit of single-family attached housing would be expected to generate .12 students, so I usually like to put that more in terms of if there was 100 units built, you'd expect to have 12 students living in them or thereabouts.
I understand. Okay, thank you, to, to Mr. Murray.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. Eli, did you want to say something?
Come on. All right. Just wanted to say thank you for the presentation. I think it encapsulates a lot of the really important data from the, the larger amalgamation of information that was, that was also posted. So just thank you for the, the presentation and for just the, the work that you did.
Thank you.
So thank you again.
I, I, I have a couple, I have a couple questions for you as well. With regard to private schools maintaining and public school declining, do you see this in other urban areas other than Beverly Hills? Is this a trend that's not just Beverly Hills, but, you know, in other areas that you're surveying?
And I would say this in the Beverly Hills and surrounding regions, certainly more robust enrollments from those private schools. What we, what I have seen in some other districts in the Bay Area and in some of the smaller cities, kind of in the Central Valley, is that the private schools have been shedding enrollment kind of in step with the public schools in some other places. So this was, I would actually say, a little bit out of the ordinary to see that kind of resiliency in the private school enrollment in your area.
Has there been consolidation with private schools as opposed to, would that also account for their maintaining their enrollment? Like, are there less private schools? So it's, for those that choose private school, it's helping to maintain that enrollment?
And from what I can recall of looking at full list, because I mean, there were a few dozen schools making up all of those enrollments, but it seemed, you know, and so from any one year to the next, they weren't always the same schools. But I would say, to the best of my immediate recollection from looking over that data, was that the largest schools that kind of contributed, the biggest chunks to that, were all still open and still keeping about steady enrollment. It was kind of a, more of a kind of churn and shift with some of the smaller to mid-size schools, which might open and close a little bit more from year to year, but the larger schools seemed to be pretty steady.
Right. I mean, I would suggest that some of the, the private schools in our area are some of the top private schools, so aside from some of those top ones, if you peeled those off and looked at the remaining schools, I would be interested to see what that trend looked like in Los Angeles as well, especially since they are too in LA County and, and in the state of California, where we're having the same demographic issues in terms of affordability and people, young families moving into these areas. So I think that would be interesting to look at. I do feel that, another question I have actually about the, the difference of the two schools is I know that you shift our student population around between Horace Man and Hawthorne, and people can, can ask to go to the different schools. Do you see a difference right now? Because they seem fairly even in terms of our student population. Do you see that there's more requests to be at Horace Man than, say, Hawthorne?
You know, it- One thing that's in the full study, there was a whole section on kind of mapping and spatial analysis that, at the interest of time, I didn't put in the presentation, but yeah, we mapped all of your students and looked at which school boundary they resided in versus where they went to school. And so most of your students do go to the school whose zone they live in, but you had a net difference of 92 students who live in the Horace Man boundary but go to Hawthorne. You know, you have some that goes both ways, but the net shift was 92 students out of Horace Man and into Hawthorne.
So they're actually requesting to go into Hawthorne even though it's not the new school?
Yes. And, and we've, we've actually been surprised, if you look at the, the data that we have shown over the years, Horace Man consistently had a higher enrollment than Hawthorne, and it matches exactly what Mr. Murray just pointed out, that, you know, we're now at a, it, it's kind of leveled out because of those people through the transfer process have wanted to do that. We've had to move teachers because of that, to support the request for, for people to move.
So in some ways, I'd say we've actually overcome, overcome in some ways the facility, not that I in any way would suggest that we don't have beautiful schools, because I think it is really important that our schools are state-of-the-art, but I think along with that state-of-the-art is state-of-the-art programming and facilities that match and serve that programming. So it's not just beautiful buildings, but beautiful labs and beautiful programs that, that we actually have within those facilities. I think that's also very important. And for me, I think what I'm hearing is one of the greatest opportunities is about bringing in Universal TK and to bring in more classes into our school district early, since we are able to offer that as a public school. And what a great service for our community to be able to offer that at both Horace Man and Hawthorne at this time. And from an enrollment standpoint, I think that's one of the first steps that we can take immediately to help address our enrollment.
I'm just-
Very much agree with that.
And, and I want to thank Mr. Murray as well for being really accessible to Mr. Roach and I. We had many meetings throughout the process, and I think we've done a really good job. The board had directed the cabinet about a year and a half ago to start looking at some of that tangible data that we did have access to, and it was, you know, meeting and getting information from families that were leaving the district and finding out why. And so we've been collecting that data, so we will compile that and share that with you. I think the area that we could do a better job in is now that we've got some, some raw data about private schools, is to really work with the city to try to, you know, get to those residents, because I think there's some valuable information in learning whether it was because there wasn't a TK opportunity, you know, or if it was facilities. It, it would be really valuable for us to know if we're just not meeting the mark to get and market out some of the programs that we do have. So that, I think, is really valuable, and that's an area that we've talked about as a cabinet that we need to rely on. And then again, just really quick to, to thank Mr. Murray for, you know, providing us, when we started to do the presentations on Universal TK, we didn't have that enrollment data, and so, but he was able to provide that to us overnight, and that has helped us flesh out our presentation, so thank you very much for that.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentations, very helpful.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the agenda hearing period for public comment. And just as a reminder, we are going to hear from each of the individuals that have requested to read their public comment this evening, and to remind people that the maximum amount of time is six minutes if someone cedes their time to you. And the first person that we will hear from is Ralph Levy, and he has six minutes. Gabrielle Levy has ceded her time.
Ralph, are you here? Yes, I'm here. Dear Madam President, dear Board members, Dr. Breggy, and if I see here, welcome to Chief Steinberg, and thanks for the Honorable Mayor Wondell Lake to be, to have been here. First, I would like to thank Dr. Breggy and all principals of the Beverly Hills School District. I understand that you are applying rules that the board is directing you to put in place, and I respect that. I would also like to thank Mr. Halemi and Dr. Stern for being a voice for our kids during the last public board meeting. Things are happening in California, in San Francisco, actually, and I quote, "We failed our children," Mayor Breg said Sunday on NBC News Meet the Press, and I quote, "Parents were upset, the city as a whole was upset, and the decision to recall school board members was a result of that," end of quote. "We as parents of the, in the Beverly Hills School District are upset, upset at testing and indoor masking protocols that do not follow science, upset at the discrimination between vaccinated and unvaccinated students that does not follow science either." Yes, this board as a whole is failing our children too. It is time to end the testing protocols causing stress to the students, especially unvaccinated. Just in case you forgot, vaccinated students carry and transmit the virus as well, so a diff, a difference in treatment is not only unfair, but also nonsensical in regard to science. Why do you keep masking our kids? Because they are resilient, do not comply much? Why are they the last of our people to be freed from that mandate? Because the teachers' unions wants to keep them masked until the end of time? Because the Los Angeles County Department of Health shuts you down despite overwhelming violations of their own rules during the Super Bowl? It is all political and hypocritical at this, at this point. It took about five minutes for my kids to take, to make the decision to remove their masks indoors when we visited a California county that lifted indoor masking restrictions. Seeing the smiles on their face was so fulfilling. Why can we unmask indoors in some places but not in school? That defies both common sense and science. We live in the United States of America, we are a free country, we are brave people and should be protecting our kids, the ones who do have the weakest voice and have empathy towards them, even if that means challenging the rules. This is what true leaders do. It is time to stop the psychological suffering and get back to normal, have a choice to mask or unmask. It took a tragedy for this board to fear the parents' reaction and bad press and change course on outdoor masking. Will it take another one to stop the masking indoors? I surely hope not. By the way, there should not be any part of P indoors with masks, which happened in our restaurant last week. All should be outside without masks. Intense physical activities such as warm-up should not happen indoors with masks. Again, we parents are upset, and I really, I am, I am really hopeful this board will show leadership and free our children from protocols that do not make any sense. However, item 20A and 20B on this agenda are not encouraging, especially after a board member suggested to get back to an in-person meeting in the near future. I guess that's a way for the board to acknowledge the parents are upset. Now, on a positive and hopeful note, last week on Monday, which was the first day after students could remove their masks outdoors, my child came to me as he came back from school and said, "Dad, thanks for speaking, for speaking for me. Now we do not have to wear masks outside anymore." I was blown away, and after a few emotional seconds responded, "Thank you. This is why I'm speaking during board meetings, and many of our parents are. We will keep on speaking until you don't have to wear masks indoors and vaccine mandates are not on the table anymore." So, as a conclusion, dear board members, now is your time to lead and free our children from these dreadful mandates. We parents will keep being the voice for our childrens until then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person that we hear here is Shadi Baruzan, and Janice Brenman has ceded her time, so you have six minutes, and you be, you may begin.
Thank you. Dear Board, thank you for your time and consideration in hearing this public comment. My name is Shadi Baruzan, and I'm reading this on behalf of Donna Trifman, as she cannot be here tonight due to having to attend her daughter's recital. This comment refers to item 17A on the agenda, the presentation by the CCAC Committee. First, the CCAC Board Committee, as it's described in the 2018 Facilities Manual, was suggested via presentation by Don Blake in May 2018. Thereafter, it was supposed to be a period of application culminating with board appointments by August 2018. The members were thereafter chosen by Dr. Breggy and Don Blake, not by the Board of Education in a public meeting. The committee was to have approximately five to six members, but only has three. The purpose of the CCAC Committee was to help the Board of Education provide accountability to the Beverly Hills community while minimizing risk and advising the board with respect to implementation of designated construction projects. The CCAC was to meet regularly and act as a sounding board for issues brought by the Facilities Committee and the Construction Manager. Importantly, the CCAC was required to provide reports not less than quarterly, meaning at least four times a year, at a regular board meeting. Thus, it's surprising that this is the first time we hear from the CCAC Committee. Trust starts with truth and ends with truth, so what is the truth here? In Don Blake's presentation on October 21st, 2021, he reported that the program is at, is, is at a shortfall of $129 million. But at the CCAC Committee report today, the number has magically dropped from 129 million to 69 million shortfall. Both conclusions are speculative, as the GMP has not been determined. What do we actually know? We know we don't have enough money to finish, and it's that simple. According to Mr. Goldstein from his application to the board a few months ago, he understands that the board is metaphorically standing on a rooftop providing the district oversight, and that is what this board must do. It is encouraging that the board is now looking at the construction program from a critical eye of oversight, because at the end of the day, the board is a fiduciary to the community, and this is the third time some community members are coming forward and saying, "Uh-oh, we don't have enough money to finish." It's time to get solutions and plans that encourage spending within our means, not encouraging more expenditure via committee wholly controlled by the vendor standing to benefit. Why hasn't the CCAC provided an alternative plan if the district does not procure additional funding? Don Blake has not been back to present an alternative to the board since his master plan presentation in October 21st, 2021. Is it his way or the highway? Of course, modern facilities attract families. It's the same pitch that was made in November 2018 by Mr. Margot and Mr. Goldstein during their presentation regarding Measure BH. They said that Measure BH would complement Measure E, and everything would be covered by both, and we'd be done with everything way before we will be. Of course, there is escalation. The escalation was including in the original pitches as well. Effective boards understand and respect their community's diverse range of opinions. The CCAC is comprised of only three people in this community. The members were not elected by the community nor appointed by the board. They were chosen by Don Blake. When Ms. Marcus stated she wanted to implement a facilities construction committee that would operate in public with meetings and agendas in minutes, Mr. Blake said that he would take it under consideration, take it under advisement, quote. In the CCAC, one member serves on both the CBOC and the CCAC, another member serves on the CCAC and the FCC as its chair. How can a member provide oversight of the construction program yet serve on another committee appointed by the Construction Manager? The CCAC meetings are not public. These meetings have no agenda, and these meetings have not had any minutes. What the CCAC presents tonight is doom and gloom, and what should actually be presented is an alternative to spending more money- What the CCAC presents tonight is doom and gloom and what should actually be presented is an alternative to spending more money. We have money left in the measures. Let's start spending within our means and figure out the planning for what they can actually do. Regaining community trust is the crucial starting point for real and sustained improvement. Trust is built on honesty and consistency and must start with the truth and end with the truth. It's time for the truth to come out. I think it's safe to say the buck stops here. Thank you. That's the end of Donna's speech and I just want to touch upon, I'm going to say my own comment just to help you guys out. I just listened to that presentation, that lovely presentation from that man. And I just want to say, I have seven, I have two neighbors with seven kids and they said they do not send their kids to BHUSD and send them to private school based on the facilities alone. So, I don't know what that, I know that the numbers are real, but there's a whole other case that you, you guys don't know about and I'm really willing to help you guys out and to find the community members and help you guys understand why people don't send their kids to BHUSD anymore. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. The next person that we'll hear from is Blanca Farrell. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Blanca Farrell. Thank you for having me on here tonight. I want to start my comment by letting you all know that I am a graduate of El Rodeo and also a Beverly Hills High School. I have three sons who are currently all at your schools. And I want to discuss one in particular. So here goes. So, my son, a student at Beverly Vista Middle School, has been a victim of continual severe cyberbullying. Nude photos of him were uploaded to Snapchat by a peer at Beverly Vista Middle School in March of 2021. The perpetrator proceeded to upload nude images of two additional Beverly Vista Middle School students also showering at his home within the same month. The case went through the Beverly Hills Police Department and subsequently tried at the district attorney level. The perpetrator had a trial and was formally charged with child pornography and extortion. Despite all of this, the student remains in school at Beverly Vista Middle School. And my son, who has been subsequently teased and harassed by almost everyone at the school, remains in hiding doing independent study from home. Not exactly an ideal way to have your 14-year-old spend his eighth grade year. At what point does the district deem cyberbullying severe enough to affect serious disciplinary action? Does child pornography tried and charged in court fall short of this? And just to add a little bit to what I was hearing tonight, in terms of enrollment, I have now applied to private schools. And my two younger sons most likely will not continue at Horseman because of this, which is really, really sad for me, being that I did graduate from this school district. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments with us this evening.
Thank you.
The next person that we're going to hear from is Melody Perrin.
Hello, dear members of the board, let's start off with gratitude. Thank you for all of your efforts in finally moving our kids forward in the right direction. The optional outdoor mask guideline was the first big step in the right track for the health and emotional well-being of our children. And I would like to acknowledge each and every one of you who helped make that happen. I am proud to be a part of this community. And we now know that we have finally been heard. And we only hope that together we can continue forward in a plan to finally end the ineffective mandates on masks on children. Sorry, I lost my track. Okay, there we go. As you, as you know, and has been mentioned here before, so many children have fallen behind academically due to masking and constant isolation. Many of them socially and developmentally behind due to the inability to see each other's facial expressions as well as hearing through masks and improper learning skills. Now that we know the facts behind the studies that were so accurately displayed by Mr. Halini's presentation of states with COVID rates either near equal or lower than ours who did not enforce masking in schools, we need to do the right thing here and remove all mask mandates while respecting the choice of those who would like to remain masked, including teachers and staff. Our testing has proven that masking and vaccination status did not change the numbers in any way, shape, or form. In fact, 91% of vaccinated teachers did unfortunately contract COVID, including many vaccinated students. Look into your own data. The answers are there. Many school boards have already pushed through and lifted the mandates on kids in their schools because they know that is the moral thing to do. When us as adults are able to sit indoors maskless at restaurants and other events such as the Super Bowl, we must protect what we, we must practice what we preach. We must be an example for our children. Most states and cities in the country are moving on and removing both vaccine and mask mandates. And our school must do what we can to save our kids from any further damage. If a number of children and staff choose to keep their masks on, that is their choice and that should be allowed. But not everyone has the same risks and therefore not every family should be made to follow rules that they believe cause more harm to their family's well-being. If childrens and staff are vaccinated, believe the vaccine is effective in protecting them, then why is there still fear in contracting from unvaccinated kids? Many teachers and staff are forced to wear masks who also do not believe it is effective, but fear consequences.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I have to stop you. Your time is, is up. Sorry for the interruption, but thank you very much for your comments. The next person we'll hear from is Iris Strauss and Marie Niemann has ceded her, her time. So Iris, you have six minutes and you may begin.
Hi. I will be reading a letter on behalf of Mr. Jamie Tinter, who is an English teacher at Beverly Vista Middle School. Good evening, members of the board, cabinet, and the Beverly Hills community. In short, I vehemently oppose the LADPH COVID safety measures and the contract MOU as it relates to COVID protocols. The masks must come off. Masking along with other bureaucratic measures over the last two years have been an absolute failure. Beyond failure, we are seeing some of the greatest crimes against our basic human rights that this country has seen in over half a century. Before your mind jumped to its Orwellian response of trust and science, I'll ask, if masks work, why haven't they worked to stop the spread? If vaccines work, why are so many vaccinated testing positive for COVID? And if vaccines are meant to just lessen symptoms, then why are triple-jap'd people so adamant on everyone else wearing masks? If lockdowns worked, why did a Johns Hopkins study find that they made a negligible 0.2% difference in death and disease? And if masks and vaccines work so well, then guess what? You have the freedom to wear as many masks as you want and to get as many boosters as you want. But, let's let our kids and families choose what is best for their mental, physical, and emotional health. We were told in March of 2020, it would be two weeks to slow the spread. Then we were told, we need to keep, we needed to keep hospitals from being overrun. Then, wait until treatments. No, a vaccine. Once we had a vaccine, everything would go back to normal. That's what you thought. That's what we were told. That's what we trusted. But no, here we are. Nearly two years after COVID was declared a global pandemic, over a year after vaccines became available, two months after the latest variant Omicron ripped through the world, the Omicron variant, which Bill Gates stated, and I quote, "Sadly, did a better job of acting as a vaccine than the vaccine." Yet we still have people who are legitimately afraid of COVID. Why? At what point will you stop being afraid? If you're still afraid now, you will always be afraid. That is until your Lord and Savior, Dr. Fauci, or the Holy Temple of the CDC declares the pandemic over. And what if they never do that? Have you thought about that? At what point does our state, our county, our school board, or we as individuals say, "We've had enough." This is the United States of America. We have a constitution and a bill of rights. We stand by the notion that we are endowed by our Creator with certain unalienable rights, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our freedoms, our students' freedoms to breathe, to see facial expressions, to learn how to speak and listen by reading lips, to view the humanity in another person's face. Those freedoms don't end where your fears begin. Let me repeat, our freedoms do not end where your fears begin. We've played pandemic for two years and we're done. The American people, the reasonable, freedom-loving people of this country and the school district are ready to move on. Thank you and keep on trucking. Now, I would personally like to leave you with this quote by Nelson Mandela. "The true character of society is revealed in how it treats its children." Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we'll hear from is Kevin Niemann. Kevin, you have three minutes.
Hi, this is actually Marie. I told Pam that he had to leave, so I'm going to read his very short speech. If I can read his writing, bear with me. Good evening. Thank you for your service to our school district and to your constituents. I am the father of two children in the district, graduate of Beverly Hills High School, and a former El Rodeo student and a student of Mrs. Marcus. I want to take the time today to remind you, the board, of the oath of office you swore to your constituents, which is as follows. I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter." And that was signed by each board member here. The oath of office that each of you swore to uphold does not say that people's fears, whether reasonable or not, are an exception to your sworn oath. Does not say teachers' unions' demands are an exception to your sworn oath. That the LA County Public Health Department rules or mandates are an exception to your sworn oath. That any persons or your own individual political persuasions on either side or neither side of this issue are an exception to your sworn oath. And the CDC does not trump the Constitution or your sworn oath. I could go on, but you get the point. It is your obligation, duty, and responsibility to abide by your sworn oaths of office. The lawyers for the district should have informed you that every COVID mandate you enforce by any agency, teachers' union, various parental requests, all violate the Constitution of the United States and the California Constitution, which you all swore to uphold. You need to comply with the oath of office and immediately make all COVID testing and masking and any potential vaccinations optional for each family to decide. Each family has a choice. Keep in mind that those that advocate that any or all mandates must be made are arguing that families should have no choice. And they are asking you to violate your sworn oath. This is a reminder that our kids' rights are not yours to give because they were never yours to take away. That is the end of my husband's speech and I want to add just one sentence for you to think about. Were our children meant to live like this? Please think about that.
I'm sorry, Marie, I have to cut you off. But thank you very much. The next person we'll hear from is Mahal Amir Salkin.
Good evening. When I read the resolution regarding virtual meetings, I was dismayed. The resolution states that the board still considers COVID-19 an emergency. Reasons include the prevalence of the Delta variant, fear of unvaccinated people, fear of unmasked people, and fear that these unvaccinated and unmasked people endanger others. First of all, Delta has been replaced by the more easily transmitted but much less dangerous Omicron variant. As for your fear of unvaccinated and unmasked people, fear of other people may have been a natural reaction at the start of the pandemic. I don't know. I lived through the AIDS pandemic, a never-before-seen type of virus that was a terrifying death sentence. COVID-19 was a new member of a well-known virus family, dangerous to vulnerable people, but causing a flu-like illness in most of the population. At this point in the natural history of COVID, there is no need for you to be scared of other people. About three-quarters of us have been vaccinated against COVID-19. Since vaccines protect against severe illness and death, it does not matter what anyone else does. We are protected. It does not matter if somebody nearby does not wear a mask. It does not matter if he or she is not vaccinated. We are protected from severe illness and death. Every vulnerable person has the ability to self-protect. He or she may choose to get vaccinated and boosted, wear a mask, not join indoor groups, not get close to other people. It is a matter of being responsible for oneself. In his speech declaring COVID-19 endemic, Governor Newsom said, "There's no finish line," suggesting that he has no intention of ending his state of emergency. Unfortunately, this resolution suggests to me that this board has no interest in ending BHUSD's state of emergency either. You want to keep families tucked safely away behind a camera lens, so we have no way to interact with you, no way for the shy ones among us to express themselves, no way to make you deal with us directly. Is this how you heal our community? Or is it easier to focus on babies? Universal TK will rebuild our district. Forget the kids who suffered through the pandemic and its aftermath. They're a lost generation. You are breaking my heart. I have spent years believing in BHUSD. How it can encourage students to reach for the highest and best versions of themselves, whether they start from a place of difficulty or a place of success. But that is only possible when we are a committed, caring community all working together to bring BHUSD to the highest and best version of itself. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we'll hear from is Clarissa Levin. I don't think she's here. The next person.
So sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Good evening. I want to thank the board for all that you've done to provide a safe and enriching environment for our children. You have done whatever you can up till now and whatever has been in your power. I am sure that there's more in your power if you can put your foot down and stand up for what's right. There are the masking issues, there are the bullying issues that I've been listening to, and there is the money issues in our, in our district. And it's very sad because I came here to this district with a lot of optimism and a lot of hope that this is one of the best districts to put my children in. And now I'm, I'm disconcerted and I'm sad. I really wish there's more you could do. I really wish there's more you can do for the freedom of our children and for the enrichment of their education. I feel like your hands may be tied. I feel like you don't have enough help or power or helping hands. The parents are willing to help you if you let us. As far as masks go, we're thankful that we have the option for our children to breathe outdoors. It would be really nice for them to breathe indoors as well. or not have to have strenuous activity inside while masked, especially the little ones. As far as Universal TK goes, I'm all for it if you can make it happen, not one or two months at a time. Open it up like the LAUSD districts have. Many of the mothers in the district are looking forward to opening the Universal TK program for all the four-year-olds in the upcoming fall, not just 20 of them, all of them. There are many students you can enroll and heighten your enrollment. Our local LAUSD schools have opened up for all four-year-olds that will turn five by June 30 of 2023. Why can't we? What do we have that's less? We don't have the resources? I don't believe that's true. Our children cannot attend LAUSD district schools. We're bound here because we live here. Otherwise, we'll send them to private schools. These children have been deprived of proper education due to the COVID restrictions and limitations throughout these last two years. Let them in. The enrollment numbers of BHUSD students would increase. Most of these students are siblings of current students and would benefit from going to the same schools as their siblings. I ask of you to please make accommodations for this fall with the transition process for these little kids to have a smooth transition and an enriching education that they deserve. We have parents that are willing to be involved, to assist in setting up or help with the transitions to make for smooth separations for the parents. It's time for us to work as a community together. Allow us, parents, to get involved.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is finished. But thank you very much for your comments. The next person that we'll hear from is Marjana Nouri.
Hello. Today, I would like to begin by raising a concern regarding PE classes at Horace Mann. Unfortunately, the PE teachers have been continuing to conduct PE classes, at least partially indoors, with the kids being masked while doing physical activities. Why are the PE teachers doing this after so many parents have raised concern over the fact that it's dangerous and unhealthy to do physical activity while wearing a mask? Another concern I have is something Mr. Bugby said at the Horace Mann PTA meeting this morning. He said that he is appalled by the parents who spoke at the last board meeting. I do not recall anyone saying anything appalling at the last board meeting. I find the statement to be very odd because I always hear Mr. Bugby talking about the husky high five, which include be safe, be respectful, be responsible, be an upstander, and persevere. Perhaps, in his opinion, these attributes should only apply when people follow his narrative and restrain themselves from expressing their own concerns or opinions. His statement today was very revealing to many parents because at Horace Mann, no one has been allowed to have an opinion other than what the administration deems correct, and parents are censored very quickly. Parents who dare speak up to voice their concern or simply have a differing opinion are bullied, silenced, and kicked out of chats by a few who have been put in charge of moderating the parents' chats. Degrading parents, in order to silence them, has become the norm, and Mr. Bugby's statement today is a great example of this. There's nothing respectful about calling parents appalling when they are raising legitimate concerns regarding the well-being of their children, especially when the statement is made by the school principal. Many parents from the school in the district have told me that they are scared of retaliation if they speak up. I can understand and relate with this concern very well. However, staying silent is not an option when it comes to my children's well-being. I have grown up in this beautiful city of Beverly Hills and have always imagined raising my family in this community. And I truly hope we can come together as a community once again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person we'll hear from is Amy Arbalo.
Hi, thank you. This is a book. It's called Giant Steps, and it was written by Director Spike Lee. And it's a simple story. It's about many Americans, mostly Black, who took giant steps over hurdles and through obstacles to do what is right and to help change the world for the better. I read it to my students every year for the past 12 years since it was first published. They hear it at the start of Black History Month, and then they write a report on a famous Black American who took giant steps to change the world. These are second graders, and they understand it. Two weeks ago, our district took some giant steps backwards in the fight for equality and justice and lighthouse education. BHUSD's Board of Education and BHE, the teachers' union, sat in silence while a parent stood up here and slanderized one of our own. This parent accused Horace Mann's music teacher of teaching about Black History Month and racism. The accusations were not false. Mrs. Chan absolutely did address those issues, as most of us teachers do during the celebration of Martin Luther King Black History Month and hopefully throughout the rest of the year. This parent then filed a formal complaint against Mrs. Chan. The real crime is not this parent's ignorance and bigotry. I mean, that's just a shame and embarrassment. But the fact that BHUSD stood idly by, not declaring such behavior as unwarranted and unjust, is what is truly at issue here. Placing the onus on the victim is never okay. I've been there before myself, where the administration and board privately would tell me that I was right, but publicly would turn the other cheek. This has got to stop. If you can't denounce this publicly, then you are implicitly supporting it. I know the rules of engagement. I know that you can't speak out for or against public comment at that time. But there is nothing but a lack of courage and integrity that prevents you from speaking out afterwards, maybe an hour, maybe a week, anything following such an inappropriate and defamatory behavior. Thank you, Mr. Bugby, for speaking out against this. We have got to stop brushing everything under the rug. We started a training program for Black History. The district sent us slides that we were to share last year. But when all of a sudden the leader of this training was fired for egregious behavior, we just canceled the program entirely, once again pretending to do what was popular at the time with no ethos behind it. I have spent 40 years in this district as both a student and a teacher. But two weeks ago was the very first time that I became embarrassed to be part of this community.
I'm sorry, Amy. I'm sorry I have to interrupt you. I really apologize for interrupting your sentence, but your time is up. The next person that we're going to hear from is Vera Dotis.
Oh, hello. Hello, board and gathered admin in there, I'm sure. I just wanted to, I'm going to change the tune a little bit here. I know as parents, myself included, tend to speak up only when there's an issue du jour, but I wanted to take a moment just to say thank you to the board and Eli, because you are an amazing student board member. Even though you're elected officials, you are also volunteers who've devoted yourselves to the highest form of service, to a most sacred demographic, our children. Thank you for taking the time to process all of the information that comes your way on all of the issues that we have that face our district, not just some, in order to make the best decisions for our children now and for the years to come. To the cabinet and the school admin, as well as the staff, thank you for all of the hard work, planning, managing, and frankly, everything you do that keeps our district going. From the daily little fires to the multi-year plans looking forward, you are all the backbone of our community, without which our district would be an unmitigated disaster. So glad you've all stuck around, which I recognize is no small miracle in this day and age. And to the teachers, I for one think you can never be thanked enough. With all of the different academic requirements, the lesson planning, the differentiation of educational delivery, the grading, the daily student interactions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, I'm surprised that spontaneous combustion isn't more common. Teaching is a profession that is absolutely a labor of love, and I thank you all for endeavoring to do it day in and day out for our kids. Thank you, thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you very much, Vera. The next person we'll hear from is Judith Chan, and Gabrielle Radonski will cede her time. So Judith, you have six minutes.
Hi. I'm here to talk about what happened in the last board meeting on February the 8th. It's not the first time that parents have used the public comments platform to criticize, defame, or slander individual teachers and call them out by name. I'm interested to know what the board thought when one parent used this platform to publicly complain about me teaching racism, teaching about racism. Do you find this behavior acceptable? Is there anything you can do as a school board to stop the lack of decorum? We have complaint procedures in place. They are clearly publicized on our district website. It would have been nice if you had chosen to remind the speaker that the first step of reaching a complaint is to contact the teacher directly. Furthermore, I would question the validity of the complaint itself. Now I have to waste time to handle this bogus complaint. Every teacher during the months of January and February has been teaching and discussing Dr. King, racism, civil rights movement, and Black History Month. Teaching about social justice is part of what educators are supposed to do. If you don't stand up as a board to denounce this kind of complaint, you are empowering and condoning this behavior. Last year, the district was going to hire an organization to provide professional development for teachers to learn more about diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice practices in curriculum. Unfortunately, it didn't work out with that organization. Since then, we have just dropped the ball. I hope that the district will continue to pursue this because we need the professional development desperately. Working in the Beverly Hills School District now means that you also must be a punching bag. When parents get frustrated and angry due to the pandemic, and I'm only referring to one group of vocal parents and not all parents, they are allowed to use the public comment here or any social media forum to accuse teachers of being child abusers, suffocating, and harming children. Comments such as "get back to teaching" or "be thankful you have a job" are hurtful and demoralizing to teachers. Parents ask, talk about emotional health of our students. What about the emotional health of the teachers? Yet, none of you has ever condemned the behavior or the choice of words that these parents used. Instead, the board decided to lift the outdoor mask requirements using some sporting loopholes two school days before the LA County guidelines were going to be changed anyway. Two days. We can't wait for two days because some people in this community think that we should be above the law. For anyone who watched that board meeting, it might seem that most people in this community are against mask-wearing and following the LA County Health Guidelines. The fact is that there were far more people urging the district to stick to the LA County Health Guidelines. To be exact, 65 were in favor versus 29 opposed, which is documented in the meeting minutes. The reason it was not readily apparent that more than twice the number of people supported following the LA County Health Guidelines is because only three of them spoke, clearly not loud enough compared to the other group. But 62 other people submitted written comments, which were not read during the meeting. I don't know why we stopped reading those comments when the board used to. It seems that the truth does not always matter in this district. If you are the loudest and most vocal, even if your words are hurtful and unreasonable, you must be right. What is the message you are sending as a board to the community on how you make your decisions? I will leave everyone to think about it on their own. The worst part of all of this is that our students are watching. They are watching how the adults in our district behave when they disagree with each other. At a recent meeting at one of the school sites, some parents complained how unclean the high school restrooms are. A colleague responded, quote, "Of course, the kids trash the school. They hear what their parents say about the teachers, and they have no respect for us." That indeed is a bigger problem than how long we continue with mask mandates. Please help to make a better example for our students.
Thank you, Judith. The next person that we'll hear from is Rivka Wulchun for three minutes.
Okay. Good evening, board members and Dr. Breggy. We have been asking to remove the masks since the beginning of in-person school, letting the board know of the dangers, showing the data and the signs, only to have you throw us a bone and insult our intelligence by finding a so-called loophole and thus have lifted the outdoor masking requirement. Last week, in my public comment, I asked that you all please revisit the letters I have read out at the board meetings and previously emailed to all of you. There are a lot of violations that are taking place at our schools because of the board's protocols that you may not be aware of and did not give importance to. I stated that it behooves you all to inform yourselves. This evening, I have served Mr. Margot, Dr. Stern, Ms. Wells, Mrs. Marcus, and Dr. Breggy via Matt Horvath, acting as a subservice for my processor with a letter of intent to file a claim against your school's insurance liability policy that is held by a risk management company in lieu of your individual liability bonds that are required by state law for every person who is elected or appointed to government or public office. You are in violation of multiple state, federal, and international laws. You may not realize this yet, but each of you is personally liable for a predetermined amount stated in your policy for damages per claim. In your policy, each occurrence is one claim filed against your policy. Each occurrence carries a predetermined deductible that you must pay prior to the insurance company covering the rest of the damages. This letter of intent stipulates the following: If these actions do not stop today, the notifying party will file a claim against your insurance government crime policy. Your insurance company has been notified of this fact. You have seven days upon receipt of this notice to correct these violations at all the schools in the Beverly Hills School District, as follows: One, remove all mandates you have enforced on our children and the staff members of each school. This includes forcing vaccinations on teachers and masking the teachers of the district. Two, remove all material and books that is obscene and dangerous for children under the age of 16 from all public schools immediately. Stop promoting dangerous vaccines that you have no idea the long-term effect of for children. Four, hold all enforcement of policies that require universal masking without parental consent and allow the parents to decide if their child should wear a mask to school or not. Five, parents will decide the education that children will receive in schools. Six, parents will decide what is best for our children, and the school will stop demanding our children not tell their parents what is happening in the classrooms. Seven, stop teaching our children that they will protect their family if they wear a mask or take a vaccine. Eight, stop coercing all forms of COVID-19 propaganda concerning how dangerous this is to our children's parents and grandparents.
I'm sorry I have to interrupt you. Thank you very much. This concludes our public comment. The next item that we will have on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 11C, 11E, 11F, 11G, and 11K.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries with a provisional vote from Mr. Eli Raymer.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion for the approval of the 2122 Safe School Plans.
I'll second.
Thank you.
The motion was made by Mr. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Eli Raymer.
I think Mr. Halimi pulled this one.
For discussion, Mr. Halimi, would you like to start?
Yeah, the only question, so thank you for this, you know, that obviously relatively new to everything here. So I assume this is an annual plan that gets updated every year. I'm seeing Dr. Breggy nodding his head. The one part that I just had a question about was some of the evacuation routes are currently not operational due to oil well remediation. It wasn't clear to me, so I saw that noted, but what wasn't clear to me that like the rest of the plan has been adjusted accordingly and we're not just leaving that as a placeholder, that there are plans of, you know, other places to go because we don't have that evacuation route available. I just wanted to make sure that's the case and then to just hear briefly about what kind of training we're doing.
Yes, Mr. Halimi, thank you for asking that question. It's a fluid document. You're actually going to see it come back because we are expecting some updates to our emergency procedures. And so while we need to have a board vote for the approval and the adoption, because of our ongoing construction and those routes, that will be continuously changed. And then the next step will be with the emergency procedures, that recommendation that will be shared with board members and with cabinet and site administration. That information actually goes back to the site councils as well for deliberation, discussion, and then it will come back to the board again. And then it's due back to the county October 15th.
Dr. Breggy, that's crazy here. It could feel like a little bit of a maze sometimes on campus with all the construction. So when I saw that line, I just wanted to make sure that that was regularly being updated and that's what it sounds like. So, thank you.
It is, and thank you for the question. And they're gonna, the information, the plans will come back to you again before we turn them into the county.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Raymer?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So on page 14 of the BHHS Emergency Organizational Plan, it missed three people as Finance Chief Mark Me, Tricia Garcia, and Pam Winston. But then on the org chart of sorts on page six, Tricia Garcia is not listed in the Finance Chief category, and I know it is somewhat of a nitpick, but I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping everything accurate and as clear as possible.
Yeah, I will have to check with the BHHS team.
Thank you.
Point for Eli. Thank you Eli.
Any other comments? I do have another comment about this since it's been pulled. I would like to make certain that we follow up and follow up with feedback from the sites when we do the different tests and drills that you have scheduled, just to make certain that we're getting feedback and really keeping this as a living document. I know that you have, one is from a compliance standpoint, but the other, most importantly, is that we are making certain that everyone is aware and knows what to do in the event of these different emergencies that could happen at our schools. And I don't think that we could put enough focus to that. So I just make certain that we keep this on the calendar and as well, I'd like to hear some feedback from the sites.
Okay.
In the future.
No problem.
Thank you. The next item, okay, sorry, actually. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Oh, Michelle, did you vote?
Yes, I did.
Yes, sorry. All those in favor, I mean, motion carries five zero with a provisional vote from Mr. Eli Raymer. And the next item, may I have a motion for item 11E?
Like a motion for the approval of Lismar Consulting Proposal for NGSS Professional Development for 2122 school year.
All right. The motion was made by Noah Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Any questions? Who pulled this? Mrs. Marcus?
I have a note here that says it, I can't remember. I have a question about this one because this is for the 2122 school year and of course we are into the end of February already. This is for the middle school science, next generation standards for best practices. And I wondered about the concern that I had is that how are the teachers, we're bringing in a teacher, how are, and I think this is for you, probably you, Mr. Seaman, how are the teachers being professionally developed in this program between now and the end of the year? Why is it that we waited so long? I think that this program was adopted, is it being adopted next year or is it?
Yep, so I can answer, I think I can tackle all your questions. So if you guys recall, we actually just did a full adoption. So we did a middle school adoption in our science curriculum last year. So our teachers were working on the implementation. And then if you look in our strategic plan, our next goal for next year is science. So it's actually where we have just used the fall to actually understand all of our new NGSS adopted curriculum for that sixth through 12th grade. Now we're bringing in the consultant. She was actually named the Presidential Teacher of the Year for NGSS. And so we're bringing her in and she's working over a three-day period, so at three different periods where she'll work with middle and high, come back, come and then review what she had went over and then come back again. So it's actually six days over the next three months. And so what we wanted to do is utilize her to be able to introduce, now that we feel comfortable utilizing the new materials that were purchased at the end of last year, we want to work with her on instructional strategies, give us some homework, go implement it, come back, review, and then again, before we start to approach that part of the strategic plan for this coming fall.
I know that this was a new adoption and I'm glad that it's being so intricately brought to the teachers. Are the teachers going to be in a special professional day off or are they gonna be, that's planned part of the whole program?
Yep, yep. So we will be bringing them into the district office and they'll be working alongside myself, Dr. Scone, Ms. Decotrel. So it's not just our teachers as well. So we'll all be part of that conversation to hold our, obviously our teachers accountable for the implementation post that training.
Thank you. I appreciate the time that being given to this because of the money that we spent to bring this program in and that we required to teach anyway, but the teachers will be well-prepared for it. And I think that's one thing we're, to improve the education in the science classroom.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you Dustin. It's exciting to hear you speak about the strategic plan and speaking about it for next year. So I like to hear that a lot. So thank you very much. I'm going to call for the vote, but it looks like Amanda has stepped away. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes four to one and with a one absence and a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item that was pulled is?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval of AirTutors for second semester 2122 school year.
Is this you, Michelle?
I did not pull it.
Gabe, is this you? Would you like to start?
The question I had on this was actually about the funding. I think it was 50% of the funding, I believe, came from Title I. And I was just curious how that worked. Why was only 50%? Could we get 100%? Is that just the, you know, bargain? Just how does that work?
Yep, so in our initial proposal in the fall, when we are supporting our English learner and our Title I students with these services, meaning the great part about AirTutors is the program will find a tutor in the home language of the house. So we'll help explain to the parents what the students are learning, the American school system, but also provide tutoring services in that native language. We've had such great success, meaning all of our students that have participated in the program have achieved a C or higher, both spring of last year, fall of this year. So going into the spring, we wanted to start looking at some of the additional funding that we will be provided around the extended learning of our students and trying to open this up to other students that may be experiencing consecutive failures in semesters that we need, we still have that home stretch before the end of the school year. So that's why we started to split the funding this spring. So Title I will help support our students of low ACS. And then the extended learning opportunity is open for all students that need that additional support before we have to start making summer school demands. So we're trying to find additional layers of support now. So that's why it's a 50/50 split this semester is we want to open it up to more students.
Got it. And how do we select the students that get to purchase a day?
So for EL students and our Title I, it's open to all those students based off the categorical funding, which is the federal funds. And then with our ELOP plan, recommendations will come from our school counselors and teachers. We've pulled grades from the fall semester and have already started identifying students that may be in trouble of possibly not succeeding second semester. And that's when we start to make those recommendations for summer school and we're trying to catch that before we get to the summer school and I have to be the bad guy of making them go to summer school.
Yeah, this is great to see them, yeah, to these kind of programs and, you know, funding going directly to supporting our kids as needed. So, thank you.
Thank you Dustin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the master contract with Westview School.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Noah Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any discussion?
Mr. Halimi, did you pull this one also?
I might have, I'm sorry, give me one second. I think I just had a very simple question, actually. Another question, I didn't know what IEP was and I was trying to figure that out.
This is an individual education plan for a special education student who is, requires a least restrictive environment in a non-public school.
Yes, yes. My question was? Okay, thank you. How many students like this do we see in an average year where we're, you know, paying to essentially send the kid out?
I will let Ms. Chisholm give you the exact number.
Not have your mics on. There you go, you're on.
Okay, all right. So currently we have approximately eight students that are placed outside of the district in these types of schools. We've had a continuous reduction of students placed in non-public schools over the last four to five years. In the 2017-18 year, I believe we had approximately 28. And now we're down to seven or eight. This is part of what we addressed through our, increasing our placement options, our continuum of placement options, through reconfiguration. So now we have a larger offering of programs that we're able to support students in district, including, you know, our special day classes and our counseling and rich classes at middle school and high school. When we recommend, when the IEP team, it's not anybody individually, but when the IEP team recommends this type of placement for a student, their needs cannot be met on a comprehensive campus. As Dr. Breggy said, it's that the school outside of the comprehensive campus is the least restrictive environment for that particular student at that time. Please note that these placements are reviewed every six to 12 months to make sure that they are still needed and we bring them back as soon as possible.
I do remember from your presentation a couple of months ago that we have been seeing a steady decline here. I think it's great that we're keeping more of these kids in the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to mention that when I first started to work on, be on the board, this was something that came up and in which we saw better improvement to the expansion of services within our own district so we could recognize the amount of students that would have to go out or to eliminate the number of students that would have to go out. And I must really compliment the programs that you've been able to instigate, which allows us to reduce the amount of money that goes to the non-public services or the non-public schools. So I really appreciate the savings that we have made. And I know that this one right here is a saving.
Thank you very much. May I add one more thing? We also have these types of placements for students who are returning for more restrictive placements such as residential placement. This is kind of a step-down placement and they attend these, this placement until they're able to return to the comprehensive campus. So we also have that as well. And we've been able to bring all of our students, with the exception of one, back from residential placement. So we've also reduced those types of placements as well.
And one other, one other thing, we have the SELPA, which is our consortium with Culver City and with Santa Monica. And what we can't provide, they can sometimes and vice versa.
Right.
So we are able to keep all of, most of our services within the district or within the consortium.
Yes, that is the goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer.
I'd like to make a motion for the ratification and purchase order report 13 for 2122 school year.
Sorry, give me a second.
11K.
Okay. I'll second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, which motion was that?
11K purchase order.
Thank you. I pulled this item, I had a couple of questions about this item and I apologize, Wade, if I didn't get fully into this with pre-questions. But can you explain how the change orders happen? Because we have TCDS on the purchase order report again this week or this board meeting and it indicates change order number four, but we don't have a change order report.
Correct. A little bit confusing, this report.
You're not on.
Let's see.
There you go.
This report's a little bit confusing. When we have a change order that's only an account code change, so for example, a goal changes or an object code changes, it generates this item on this purchase order report. So what we're trying to do is figure out a way to be able to only on this purchase order report have change orders that actually change the amount and not just the account code. So we're working on figuring that out. So what you're seeing are change orders where there was no change in amount, no change in the resource or the funding source, just a change in the account code. So that's generating this change order and it's causing some confusion and I apologize for that.
Right, there's no need to apologize. I'm just curious. When I see the change order, I know there is a change order that's been generated, it doesn't come to the board.
Right.
So my question, or my, you know, concern would be, can we see change orders even if they're line item changes? Because there is paperwork that goes behind that that shows there's a change order, it's indicated as a change order. And so if it shows up on the change order report, even if it's not a change in dollars, but it's a shift in dollars within the line items, there's an explanation as to why. And I think that's helpful, especially when it comes to the bond funds, because those, there's such big dollars there and to understand and be able to track that because otherwise we don't know where that change order went if you didn't catch it on the purchase report.
Sure, let staff work on that because we literally do dozens, if not hundreds, of changes in account codes. So we wouldn't want the board to see all of that, but we'll see if we can talk about structuring that. So it's related to maybe a certain dollar amount or?
Right, it's just when we see these big purchase orders and then we're seeing the change order or we're seeing them come through in the warm report, it's much easier to be able to say, oh, this was a change order or you'll remember it. Because like we've seen now this change order happen the last couple of weeks.
Exactly.
The other question I have with regard to TCDS is, I was looking to find in old reports, since I've been on the board, a change order for hourly rates for TCDS because I noticed on a previous? on a previous invoice, when I first got on the board, where the hourly rates for many of the employees are at, say, for example, $133 an hour. And now I'm noticing on previous, current reports, that the hourly rates have increased to 185 an hour. So it's like a 30% increase for hourly rates for certain individuals. And in, and in another case, almost 40% of an increase. And I just don't see anywhere where that hourly rate increase came to the board as an approval. So I'm curious how that happens? Because these are big numbers. It's like a $100,000 increase roughly for one, you know, line item for a position. And there's multiple hourly rate increases for, say, for example, project managers that went from 133 to 185, which can total in a year, if you, if you just multiply by 2,200 hours, that's like a $400,000 salary. And so to not have that come to the board as a very specific approval for rate increases, I'd like to know, like where does that, where does that fall in the scheme of things for the board?
So the, the rate schedule was approved as part of the original contract with TCDS. And I don't believe there's been any change in that rate schedule for a while. So let us look, take a look at that and see what's going on because that rate schedule was approved by the board. And then any changes to that would come to the board as a change in that rate schedule. So let us take a look at that.
Right. And, and just so you know, I compared it to, to that 2018 or 2017 contract, and it, and it has increased. And then I compared it to the proposed contract, and it actually had proposed 10% increases on these 30% increases. So I just, I think that's something that we should follow through. I think it's really important for us in terms of our, how our processes go when it comes to these big numbers.
Sure, most certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Sorry, sorry. I froze for a second. I'm starting to get the plate here, not froze, zoom.
Well, you're, you're in Zoom, Zoom land.
The other question I just had was, can I just get an example from Wade? And I'm sorry, I see he just left the podium. Can I get an example of like what kind of a code change we might see? Because there, there are like eight different lines of change orders. So just like, what's, what's an example of something that might change from a code standpoint that it would like show up in a change order like this?
So each account code has several, several segments. So as it's going through the process, the person that put the requisition in may use, say, a 5,000 object code because they think that's the correct object code. But when it gets to further down the line, the, the real object code should be a, say, a 6,000 object code, and that would elicit a change. So we can have a, I love doing accounting one-on-one, so any board members that want to come down?
I'm always calling you on those. Thank you.
But something that's similar, simple as that, so.
Okay. All right, thanks, Wade.
Thanks, Wade. I appreciate it. And I apologize for not putting that in questions in advance. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. And that is all the items for the consent. We are now at reports. Dr. Bregge.
Thank you. And Eli, will you do us both a favor? Thank you. Thank you very much. So just want to start off with some follow-through with our branding work. And I know that people have been really patient and we really appreciate that. But we're finished with our inside area. And the last piece that we have is the legacy crest that is just outside of the swim gym, and that should be done in the next couple of weeks. But we're really proud of the work. It's just, we're getting lots of positive comments when people walk back into the swim gym. And I think that these were some necessary upgrades to the entire facility. As you know, we put a lot of money into the maintenance inside and the, the functioning of the swim gym floor and updating a lot of the materials. But the painting inside and outside with help from the board has been really effective. So thank you very much for that. We're almost finished. Some exciting news with a historic athlete in our school district. This is Louise Bruff. She attended Beverly Vista and Rodeo. She has 13 Wimbledon titles. We're very fortunate that Josh Gross and Julie Steinberg were very generous and thought of us at BHUSD, and they presented us with one of Louise's Wimbledon trophies. And so we are now in possession of that, and we're very proud of that. And we're really grateful for this opportunity to be able to showcase her work as an outstanding athlete, but also as a Beverly Hills grad. Few things happening throughout the district. So with BVMS, we had a winter pep rally, which was really successful there. It's actually came on the first day that we were not masking outside. So you can see people in the picture with just masking by choice outside. And then also at BVMS, we have our interdisciplinary after-school culinary and media classes. And so special thank you to Chef Lees and also to Cindy Dubin for providing this incredible opportunity for our middle school students. At Hawthorne, they have a garden club. Eli has pointed this out before, and they meet on Wednesdays. And it's just, here's another example of just a recent picture where you'll see some students masked outside and some have chosen not to do so, and everybody's getting along just fine. And so this is just an interdisciplinary opportunity for students that are studying everything from insects to plants and able to connect that right back to what's happening in the classroom. At Horace Mann with our kindergarten students, just picture of the administration working with some students here. And just an update on our strategic plan because as our, our jobs have changed this year with, with all of the health official responsibilities with the county, we're very excited and we've heard the board loud and clear that we started to do some presentations last year on our strategic plan, that at times, all at once, it's a bit much. And so we heard you loud and clear. We are going to be doing our two-year progress with our goals. And we're really going to do it a little bit differently this year. So as you can see, the, the, the growth, the student growth all the way to the technology, all of our goal areas really are kind of flipped. And if you see, starting with number eight, that is something that we're going to share with you in March. And the reason why that works the way that it does, we really need to let some of the, the goals with student growth and professional learning, those are some areas that really need, that are in development right now, and so need that extra time. We're really going to do something different. We're going to be using some technology and we're going to be taking some video so that we can show you what our kids are doing. So instead of administration up here and sharing with what's happening in our schools, we really want to do something creative. And so some video vignettes, if you will, so that you can see our teachers and our students in action so that you get a better understanding of what it means for each area. And so we're breaking this up, starting with March all the way to July. And something that I've heard that I do appreciate is that this is, you know, we're monitoring our year two progress, but we're in a different place than we were in two years than we thought we would be. So we're really going to, at the end of each presentation that's made in the video that we share with you, is to really take an honest look at where we are and, and look to see what adjustments are needed. And, and that, that puts us in a vulnerable spot because I think that, you know, we, it opens us up to, did we make our goal or did we not? We want to be really honest with the board about where we are and if any changes need to be made. And I've heard that feedback from board members, and I appreciate that because it really does show that, you know, there's a human part to putting together a strategic plan. And we really want it to be a reflection of where we are in a very accurate and authentic way. So we're really excited to start with technology in March. So we're very excited about our enrollment center options. And Ms. Starkins and with Ms. Chisholm have been working together to really create a new area on our website for our new families. And so I'm going to just click on this one area because this is pretty cool. If I can get rid of that. So our open enrollment, we have a, just going to be opening very soon, which is why I know we have some business on the agenda that we're going to be sharing. But we have some new information here. It's kind of a one-stop shop for families now. And so they can do all of their paperwork, they can do all of their enrolling. Here on this one page in our website, you can get student tours. And let me go back to that. Oh, it keeps going back to that. Let's see what I wanted to show you here. It was really cool. It's, here we go. How awesome this is. So here is a place for prospective family tours. And it's just a friendly place, and you can see that everything up here from our values to enrolling, to the tours, the pathways to success that we've shared, those are available, FAQs, even disenrolling is all in this area, and that also comes with the survey if people are leaving, as I had mentioned before. But it's a real friendly way, an approachable way, and an accessible way to reach out to our administration to make that appointment for the next tour at each of our schools. So we're very proud of that. And that continues to grow. So we're very sad, as you know, as we announced that Mr. Roach is going to be retiring, and of course, he's earned that. And we're very proud of him, and we're very sad. But we've had this opportunity over the last three years to really get to know and work with Wade, and that's not the reason why this is on here because we'll thank you later. But this is just an example to show you as we begin to search for a replacement. How? I don't know how that's even possible. But we've really reached out to our professional journals. We have reached out through technology to share with districts throughout the state to find the next Assistant Superintendent for Business Services. So we've got a great brochure here. And as I mentioned, we've reached out to places all over the state where chief business officials and assistant superintendents might be looking. And so we have several people that have already started to apply for the position. So wanted to let you know that that's out there, and the search has begun. So we wanted to just update some of the data that we shared before. I, for lack of time, I won't go into all of the data, but it's trends in the direction that you would think that it would. Again, we're a reflection of what's happening in our community, and it all really points to a success that's happening with low transmission in the community. So we've now updated, these are the, the weekly reports that we have. The dashboard is a little different. What I just showed you was kind of the week at a glance. This is for the last five days. So you can see where we are, just the active cases that we have as a school district in the last five days, and we are at four. And we were asked to share some information about our vaccination rates, and so we placed this just on the website. Many people have asked for this information, and so this is updated every Wednesday, and this information is now placed on our website with the other data. And with the testing program, as we have talked about before, as we move forward through, through the pandemic to an endemic, that we are open to discussions with the board in any meeting to talk about the testing program that we have in place. There is a one-month contract change that's required, so, you know, there is something to consider as far as if, if we're going to be making any adjustments at all to our overall testing program. So that's kind of in there just as a, as a reminder that, you know, we're willing to talk about the ideas, what can we do to begin looking at our testing program? When the transmission rate is so low, it shows, doesn't show as much high value to a robust testing program. So we're ready to kind of talk about how we can get creative, you know, coming up over the next several weeks. So Universal TK, we heard about this tonight, this opportunity, and it was nice to hear and get some feedback from the community about TK. And, you know, we've had a lot of questions about just the name Universal TK. We're, we're starting to get a lot of people that are trying to understand what the difference is between Universal TK and TK. And Governor Newsom has said before that he had felt the state was lagging in early childhood education, and so especially with not every district having a TK program. So that's why he has called this new plan, this kind of unveiling, if you will, a, a universal expectation across the state of California. And we've offered TK for many years. In fact, it was the fall of 2011, Ms. Vance was the first teacher that taught TK. That was, it was at that time Beverly Vista. And just a fun fact, the first BHUSD TK students in the district are now in ninth grade. So I want to thank Mrs. Marcus for this slide because, you know, let's be honest, even as a cabinet, when we worked on this, I can't tell you how many times we said, wait a minute, wait, so if you're five, no, I mean, you know, it's embarrassing, but we did this, and we argued with one another. Because it was, if, wait, if you're five or if you're four? And we did this over and over and over because it's really kind of confusing. And when I was talking to Mrs. Marcus, it was like, well, wait, what about the, you know, we keep talking about, you know, when you turn five, what about those students that are supposed to be going to kindergarten? And so that's where it hit me, that it's, it, it really cleared up for us that we almost need to see this continuum. Because there were a lot of questions about, you know, if you turn five, but we left kindergarten out of the equation. So we want to be really clear, and you can see by this example right here, that, you know, if, with, if you're going to kindergarten, you, you're going to turn five by September 1st. So if you are turning five by September 1st, which is kind of the beginning of school, that you will be in kindergarten. And so it's that, that longer, that's those kids that miss the cutoff. And, and because we hear from the parents that, you know, that are just after that deadline, that's where that TK part starts. Sure.
I just want to, again, be, thank you. Again, to remind you that the parent of that child that's going to be turning five and could go can still, perhaps if he wants that child to be, if he doesn't feel he's ready, can still go into the TK program for an extra, to be ready for the next year so that there is that option still for that parent.
We, we do, we have a lot of meetings with, with families that just want to get a better idea if they're, if their student, you know, many times not to overgeneralize, but, you know, a lot of our female students are, they're ready to learn and ready, you know, and some of our boys fall a little bit behind. And so we do have those opportunities, that flexibility, based on each individual student. And so especially with a program like this, it really opens up those opportunities. So I'm glad that you, that you said that. And I appreciated the feedback because we were getting a lot of questions because people were like, what about kindergarten? Well, kindergarten is a big part of this as well. So hopefully that visual is helpful. And it shows you, again, this is the cabinet recommendation, that the September 2nd to the June 30th. And I'm going to go through the rest of this pretty quickly because I just want to kind of recap just a couple of things from the last two presentations that we did. We showed you this diagram that showed you the rollout, that school districts get to make the change and get to make the decision. The only change that we can't make is all the way to the 2025, 2026 school year for our students that are three. And so those are the students, we'll get ready for that in 2025, 26. But what's in front of us tonight is... But what's in front of us tonight is to make that decision about how long that this continuum right here, how far do we go? Because we could go to February 2nd. And as you can see here, the next date goes to April 2nd. And so, you know, the most important thing is, and I know that it says September and 2nd in there, but the ed code 37-200 allows us to maximize that. And it just makes sense to do June 30th because that makes sure we get everybody that's in the month of June. So our current policy, as you know, is from August 1st to December 31st, which is, I know, a little bit confusing, especially for our kindergarten students. And that's why I'm glad Mrs. Marcus brought that up. But we're looking to change that today. So impacting enrollment. And I'm glad that we had the presentation today because I think it's really important that we're able to share with you again, some of those numbers that we didn't have before and the increases to the overall enrollment, which is really a good thing for our school district. Bringing back that policy with the most inclusive age bracket. You know, we expect for that expansion of eligibility to be, as we said before, we, it was kind of a minimum of two additional sections. And now we have a little bit more information to share with you with the numbers. So this is from the last presentation where we talked about the facilities and the staffing and the credentialing. And this is really an important part because we have nine teachers that are interested in teaching TK for next year. And all nine of them are, have expressed the interest to participate in a cohort so that we can help them get their 24 hours of early childhood education credit so that they have the right credential to cover for TK and earlier. We've talked about the classroom size and the funding issue. Like this becomes such a hot item on board agendas all over the state. And so there's a lot of pressure for Governor Newsom to start coming up with additional grant opportunities. And we're really excited about that because the more people talk about this, the more people are asking for the things that they need. And more opportunities are starting to pop up for some of our grants. So what do we need to decide? We've talked about that. The open enrollment is scheduled to begin. It was today. We did move that one day so that we could have the discussion tonight so that we could get a board vote on the policy so that we can start moving forward. The last presentation that we gave, we gave you some additional information about open enrollment. We shared with you the policy again. We shared with you the numbers, which again, from the demographer are really encouraging and gives us a better idea of what we're working with. It'll be really interesting to see and follow these numbers to see how many people actually sign up, where are these students going? We shared with you just some basic costs. And until you get in there and you know, like a lot of our construction projects, you got to get in there. We've got a lot of creative ideas about moving some classrooms so that we're utilizing existing plumbing and keeping our costs down as much as possible. We have some rooms to furnish and so we've shared those costs with you. As I mentioned, we are looking for every opportunity. There are grants out there and we're very fortunate that we're a smaller school district. So we're not looking to, you know, add like some districts 10 sections. So the policy we've shared with you before, that excerpt that we'd like to be more inclusive and we would like to include students from all the way till June 30th to be part of our TK program. And so happy to answer any questions. Mr. Seaman can answer some questions about instruction or Wade on some of our facilities. But we're really all working together to, you know, to really make this a successful opportunity. We're really excited. Our teachers are excited about it and we know that our parents are excited.
Thank you, Michael. Dr. Stern, would you like to begin?
Thank you very much. Very encouraging to see the rollout about, of Universal TK. A couple of questions. So as it exists now, it's mandatory to be enrolled in school by age six, correct? Yes?
Yes, six.
Right. So, so when, let's say it's the year 2024, 25, when we, you know, there's fully available TK. Will it still be age six in which it's mandatory? In other words, will it be optional to go to TK or preschool?
Yeah, go ahead, Dustin.
Sorry, call you back up. Okay. And you anticipate that they will?
I think they will. I think that as they get closer to the 25, 26 school year, I think that's when they, when the, the word universal, meaning everyone has started to implement the four stages.
I think that's by the 25 school year, I think that we'll see a change in ed code requiring possibly going down to five year olds.
Right, that by the time you're five, you must be enrolled in school.
Correct.
So then the other question I have is the, the full time versus part time cohort or situation. So the way preschool is now, often it's, you know, it's, it's half a day and they have a rest period. Will there be an option for full time versus part time preschool, or sorry, Universal TK for the younger ones? Or is it pretty much going to be full time, like school hours? Just curious.
Yeah, right now, we are hoping as we're able to build out sections that we're hoping to continue what we're currently doing where it's very academic focused and that it's basically a full day of school. But with the staggered starts, obviously, and stops, again, carpool, those types of things. The other part too is, is just around like our specialist programs. You know, being able to provide the littles, starting to introduce art or starting to do, introduce, you know, possible physical education or at least play, play opportunities. So that scheduling piece too impacts that. So if we shortened days, as an example, we run out of time, kind of, really, you know. So it's really that longer up until one o'clock, kind of later gators, those types of things.
Right. But we may want to even think about, you know, just the after school need for childcare and adventure camp. Because, you know, just talking with the city that, you know, it's just another opportunity for, for some of our working parents that, you know, so you, really the scheduling piece is something we're looking at for next year, just so we can maximize that, that, you know, that, that support, you know, after school and just kind of that wraparound care for kids.
Will the mandatory 30 minutes of rest still be something that is enforced on a daily basis?
Yes.
And is it now enforced in TK and not kindergarten? Or is it all the way up through kindergarten that they do that?
Kinder as well.
And you don't actually have to be asleep, but I think for the rules, you have to be like lying down quietly.
Yep.
Which can be very difficult for teachers depending on the activity levels of the kids. But okay, thank you.
Yeah, both TK, Kinder.
Okay.
Michelle, would you like to go? Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to thank you for the presentation. I would like to make a comment on the little carrots that were grown. They weren't so little. I was amazed at those carrots that came out of that garden over at Hawthorne. That was adorable.
That's great.
And, and I just wanted to mention that they did a great job in the garden. Also, I also want to thank you, Dr. Bregy, for making the change in the strategic plan presentation. I for one felt that that was a marathon the last time that we had it, as you recall. But I think what will be very interesting about it is that we will be able to more focus on each individual item as it's presented to us, which will give us better feedback, better presentation, et cetera. And I, I think that's really a welcome change. So thank you for doing that. What can I say about Dr. Roach? I'm going to miss him. And I, I just got to say, I'll say more later, but no one made the financial portion of the meetings better for me than you did. And I'm going to miss that. And I'll, that's later on, I'm already too, too much to say to that. I do have a question now and I'm very great, I mean, I've really studied the TK program and the Universal TK, that they're both the same as far as I'm concerned. It doesn't mean anything. There was a thing in there that about 21 to one and 12 to one from the state. Is that the state is not planning to have instructional assistance and they're going to do 12 to one? I don't understand that 21 to one and 12 to one ratio as it was presented in the, can you explain that, Dustin?
Yeah, and this is something we all need to pay attention to as well is the first year, they will still allow us at the 12 to one. It does then go down to 10 to one, meaning that there has to be a certified teacher in the room. But we can then just put, and it labels it adult. But in our, we use instructional assistance. We'll be the secondary person in the room, like our current structure in our TK and Kinder classes. But that'll allow us to get up to 20 students with two adults after the second year of implementation.
And Mr. Bugby and Ms. Caper are also with us. So, you know, at any time, please feel free to jump on and thank you for joining us.
I have one other comment and that had to do with the amount of money to update the classrooms. I had asked a question about the consent calendar when we were talking about the, the money that we got. And I asked about the developer fees. As you recall, that was a question that I had asked. And it has been suggested that the developer fees can be used to help update or get the classroom projected to change them so that they'll be ADA for the kids. We're also expecting some, hopefully some funding from that, from the state or from the government. So hopefully I hope we can save our developer fees if we don't need to use them and we can get the funding. That was the thing that I was.
You are absolutely correct. We do have the developer fees to fall back on, to use for, for expanding this program. But we were going to go all out to try to get some state funding to use first. And then if we have to, we'll use developer fees.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that.
Good question.
I'm done.
Mr. Halimi, did you have any comments?
One, just to thank you to Dr. Bregy for the report regarding Mr. Roach's resignation.
That's true. It's a good point.
Well, there's a lot of concern in the community around DEI and how we teach DEI. There was, there was a part of your presentation where you called out June as diversity, equity and inclusion month. I think at some point, we as a board should have a conversation about how that gets implemented, what the appropriate kind of talking points are. I think there's a lot, it seems like there's a lot of sensitivity around it for good reason with, you know, some of the, some of the, sorry, it's getting late here. My head's getting cloudy. With just some of the dialogue that we've seen at a national scale, state scale, et cetera. So I just want to call that out. It would, it would be great to better understand the kind of, the curriculum that, that will be, that teaching during that time.
I'm glad that you did, Mr. Halimi, because I think as it was mentioned, you know, in public comment about, you know, we, we had started something last year, didn't really take off. And so what happened this year? And so, you know, when I mentioned to you that I want to have some honest conversations about areas where we were excelling in and some areas where, you know, we need, need some help and some direction in. And so that's why I had added that other portion that, you know, this is going to be an opportunity to look to see where are we now and what direction we're going to go. And, and that is, is an area where we need some more involvement.
And that would be great. And I look forward on, I'll be working on that together. The thing about.
Sure.
By the way, Gabe, I did, we did vote on his, on Wade's retirement already. It was on the consent calendar today. And I did ask if we cannot vote on it, if there's any avenue. That was rejected as well, so. And I've tried that in the past. Dr. Bregy, just to be clear, the enrollment page is for new families, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So just, just because we get all excited, it's like a new toy to play with. But, you know, my kid goes here already, so I don't get to play with that toy, right?
Well, but there's also, we added a section in there because as we were board directed a year and a half ago is we really want to keep track of people that have made choices to leave. And so there is a section.
Are you throwing me out now?
No, no.
What is that?
No, just letting you know that this is all new. That, so that we can get the data, like why somebody's leaving.
Yes, I, I, I did not. I, I noticed that and I appreciate that. I just, I wanted to make sure the community was well aware of that the enrollment page is for new families and that we will continue with our continuing enrollment for existing families, the way we have, where I get multiple emails that I log on to and say, yes, my daughter's coming back. And then I get more emails that say, is your child coming back? So I don't know. You get that too?
Yeah, yeah, we're not, you haven't done the form yet. I'm like, I did the form.
Lchism@bhusd.org.
Thank you. Is, is that bug been worked out? Thank you.
I can speak to that. So the new toy that you all have to play with is your intent to return form. Please, please submit that. The reason why.
That's what I'm talking about.
I, I know, but he was saying that it's for new families. Existing families have a new toy, which is our parents' current intent to return form. The reason why you guys had a few extra reminders is because you have some extra fake children in the district, which enables you to have lots of communication as board members about everything that's going on.
Right. So what, what Ms. Starkins mean by extra fake children, so the, thank you very much for that, is that as board members, we have access to Parent Square. And then as parents, we have access to Parent Square. So they had to set up multiple accounts for us to be able to access Parent Square in our multiple roles in the district. That's for those of us that have students in the district. So it's not to think that I am cloning somebody and putting them in multiple classes or anything like that. Anything else you want to drop on the community there?
No, that would be it.
The other, thank you. The other thing, Dr. Bregy, I think it's important to mention as you discuss COVID information and stuff, just to make the announcement that Governor Newsom is having a major press conference on Monday that a lot of people are aware of, that, that was announced in the papers too, that there is to be an expected shift on, on protocols and mandates in some degree. So, so we thank the community for their vigilance. We welcome your comments always. Please pay attention to what is happening next week and be advised. So as, as, as know that whatever happens on a state level does trickle down to us.
We'll be tuned in.
Encourage people to be tuned in. Thank you very much. That's all.
Okay, that's me. All right, Eli, did you go? All right, you go.
Thank you for your report. I'll give my thanks to Mr. Roach later on in the meeting. But so I've got some questions. One of them on the enrollment count, not enrollment calendar, enrollment center. I love just the look of it. For the prospective family tour section, this is kind of nitpicky. But each school site has picture of the principal, then a picture of students, then a picture of the facilities. But Beverly does not have a picture of students. And I feel like that would just kind of help open it up and be more inviting because currently it's just a picture of the field and a picture of the media center. And while they are beautiful, I think that having students faces there is like the other schools would be, would be beneficial to getting people to come take tours. Another question about that is are students, or are tours happening again?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know that they were on hold for quite some time, but so they are beginning again?
They are.
Fantastic. What else was I going to ask? Oh. So the tours are run through PTA or PTSA respectively?
I can let Ms. Caper and Mr. Bugby answer that question about tours.
First man is just reopening our tours. Pre-COVID, how long ago was that? It was run through PTA? We've been communicating with PTA. It will probably be a combination of administration and PTA.
At Hawthorne, I run the tours and I'm hoping to include some student council members in the tours because we're getting more and more involved.
Thank you very much. I was going to, I was going to offer. It sounds like fun. One other, this is a personal. Um, one other, this is a, a personal matter, but I, my notebook only has one more page. Is there another one available? Yeah.
We can get you some more paper.
This one has two pages. Here you go.
Thank you.
Passing notes now.
Eli, are you finished?
Yeah, that'll be all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I, um, not to make our meeting any longer this evening, but thank you very much for your presentation. I'm really happy to hear about the strategic plan, uh, update. I think that's just been really a priority to me so that we continue to make that document remain a living, breathing document. I think it's such an important tool for us to keep, uh, us focused on our goals and achieving our goals. Also, um, I can't go any further without, um, saying how disappointed I was to hear about Wade and, uh, his, um, planned departure. And I've only heard Wade the most wonderful things about, uh, your contributions to this district from the time that you've come and that you've made so many things so much better. And I think that's a universal feeling and, uh, belief, and I'm sure, certain that it's a fact. So I'm, I'm really disappointed to hear that, and maybe by July, you'll change your mind. And then, um, we'll talk about TK further, so I'm gonna table that, my comments for that now. The only other thing I would add, and maybe this is not the appropriate place to put it, but we did meet with the, um, city, uh, with the mayor, Mayor, um, Bob Wonderlich, and with Lester Friedman, who are the liaisons for the school, and we had a really wonderful, productive conversation with them, Noah Margot and Dr. Breggy and I, uh, around, um, what, and what ways we can partner further with the city and to really, uh, enhance our partnership. And one of the areas we really focused on was, um, early education, preschool, uh, TK, and, uh, and how we can utilize our resources together to really enhance that in, in daycare and after-school programs. So I'm really excited about that. I think they are as well. Uh, in addition to that, we talked about, um, how we can also enhance our other programming with the school aligned with the, with the city. And there were so many great ideas and ideas about, um, you know, utilizing our city resources and, and human resources really, and all the talents of our city, um, to really provide, um, great programming for our students, uh, be it in areas of art or in areas of, uh, how our city runs and so many different things, and all the different professionals in our community and what they can contribute, uh, through the city to our students at all of our schools. So that's really exciting, and I'm sure that we'll be back with more updates on that as well. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Can I just give a quick, a thank you to, uh, Mr. Bugby and Ms. Kaber? Like, the laws were changing, uh, just even up to two weeks ago, and, um, there were several times where we made a, a call to them just to come over to the district office, and, uh, they really rearranged schedules to meet and collaborate with us. And I, for one, have learned a lot about, uh, early childhood that I didn't know before as a secondary teacher, and so, um, that was a great growth opportunity for me. But, um, thank you for making yourself so available. Uh, we're, we're kind of used to the state and the county dragging on and changing things as they go. So we were ready for it, but, but thank you for, um, you know, making this a priority so that we could provide and share this information with the board.
Thank you both very much. Any other comments? Okay, uh, moving along, then our next report will be Eli Raymer's student board member report.
So that time again. One thing I did forget to mention that, uh, Dr. Stern reminded me of is, and, uh, Mr. Seaman, you may as well answer this, is, um, can, can we implement the thirty-minute rest period into high school? Because I know a lot of people would, would greatly appreciate that. People seem to take their thirty-minute rests regardless of it being assigned, but, uh, just thought I'd put that out there. Um, but alrighty. Let me get started. Whoop. Sorry about that. Alrighty. There we go. Let me. Alrighty, here we go. It's a pretty short one. Um, I've only got information from the high school and, uh, Horace Mann this evening, and the high school info you have already seen, but I figured that I would reiterate it, and y'all probably be reiterating it a couple more times in the, in the following weeks and months. So, BHHS going straight to the future. Um, of course, Singing in the Rain, the major musical production put on by our theater, um, as well as just our performing arts, uh, in general. I'm very excited to be able to play in the pit orchestra for this, uh, musical, and I know that a lot of other students have some opportunities that they wouldn't normally have, whether it be in pit orchestra or in the chorus, or just to be able to perform in a, in a large musical like this, especially in a professional setting like the Saban Theater. So it's really a fantastic opportunity that we give to our students every year, and I'm very happy to be a part of it and to see it really coming into form now. Seize Candy fundraiser for the class of 2023. That will be going on until, uh, April 1st, so place your orders now. Um, to find the link to order, go to the Instagram bio of BHHS, class of 2023, uh, or, um, ASB BHHS. One, of course, being the general ASB Instagram, the other being the class of 2023 specific, so hoping to see you participate. Dance Company Show, another fantastic show, also taking place at the Saban Theater, uh, March 17th, 18th, and 19th at 7:00 PM. I know how hard, uh, they work choreographing and then practicing and just making sure that everything is really, uh, just as well rehearsed as it could possibly be, possibly be. It's always a very exciting show to go watch, so we have that to look forward to. Uh, other news, this Thursday, there is a, a band concert at, a high school band concert at Horace Mann at 7:00 PM. Uh, there will be performances from our concert band, our jazz band, and our symphonic band. Uh, symphonic band and concert band are classes during the day, and the jazz band is an after-school extracurricular that students volunteer, uh, to be a part of. So some of the members are in the other bands, others are in orchestra, and some aren't involved in, uh, music classes at the high school, will play an instrument, and are able to participate. And it, it's always a good time. We have a, a great set lined up this, uh, Thursday, so I'm hoping to see you there. And on the Horace Mann. So, um, for Black History Month, there is a fourth grade class at Horace Mann that made an inspiration wall. Um, I love seeing, as I've said before, I love seeing projects implemented into teaching. I think it's a, it's a very good way to learn and to teach, and so this is a, a perfect example of that. For the Super Bowl, uh, students at Horace Mann showed pride for the, the Rams, both, I believe, before and after, um, before the game and then after their victory. Uh, they also, teachers also implemented the Super Bowl and, and the Rams in general into, um, their education, for the, their education program, the lessons that they taught for the, the days leading up. Valentine's Day, here is a fifth grade class who was using the, uh, little conversation hearts to, to do math. And I know that was also implemented, uh, here in this third grade class as well. Uh, and then here is, uh, Ms. Rokio's, um, kindergarten class exchanging Valentines to each other. And at Horace Mann, they were also given an introduction to BVMS and what it means to be a bulldog, so they were visited by, uh, BVMS students, BVMS counselors, and admin, and given a presentation about, um, what their, this is two fifth graders at Horace Mann of what their life is gonna look like next year at the middle school, as well as in general what it means to, um, go into middle school and also just what to expect in, in general. So this is there. Whoops. This is the assembly that they had, and here are some more pictures from it. And that's it. Pretty short this evening, but let me know if you have any comments or questions.
May I?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Eli. Um, I did, two things. Um, for the theater program, uh, tonight, uh, kind of goes under the wire, but, um, our wonderful theater teacher, Kaz, is retiring. Um, so this, I guess, will be her last musical, but I wanted to give her a shout out. Um, she, she stayed longer than she ever planned to, so, um, through all of this mishegah, so that's a, a shout out to her and the program, and it's always a wonderful performance. And Dance Company, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, this was in my box in the district office. Um, the amazing thing about the Dance Company this year is their show is always in January, and they rehearse and stay in shape for a January show, and then they usually afterwards, the seniors get to kind of lay back, enjoy the rest of the, they don't get to do that this year. They gotta go to the middle of March, and they gotta stay in tip-top shape, they gotta keep their chops, and they gotta, so to that entire DECO, I have to give a shout out to them. It is amazing what they're gonna have to go through just to, when their show is moved, just to, to, um, perform that. So good job for those, the Performing Arts Department in our, in our high school, uh, making us proud. And thank you for bringing this information to us tonight.
Again, I love having you make your presentation, Eli, and I want to just, um, let you know that the, the shows this year, I'm sure, are gonna be fantastic, and I'm looking forward to bringing my grandchildren to Singing in the Rain. I think that they might really enjoy that, and, um, so, uh, I, I love the VAPA in our district, the Performing Arts is an unbelievable thing, and, and, and I sent a note to Dr., Mr. Bradbury. You know, I've always go to the marching, I mean, the band concert. I'm still waiting for John Philip Sousa. So I hope, maybe that'll be on the program this year.
Thank you, Eli. Very enjoyable, and I think that it highlights that one of the, one of the great things about our district is the state-of-the-art, uh, visual and performing arts that we have. I know we have over twenty-two different elective just for the elementary school and forty-four for the middle school, and so, I mean, it's, it's really incredible, and you always do a nice job of highlighting those, as well as participating in some of them as well. Thank you.
Mr. Halimi?
And, uh, thank you for your report, Eli, as always.
I would suggest, Eli, you're one of our best, um, ambassadors for our school district, and if we wanted to increase enrollment, uh, you are potentially our secret weapon. So I think all of your student board updates should go on a reel, and we should just send that out to all of the 90210, because you're doing such a fantastic job. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, and see you Thursday.
All right, the, uh, we are at item thirteen, Education Services. This is information only, the mid-year LCAP and supplemental report. And, Mr. Seaman?
First stage, so this has never been seen by us or even the Board of Education before. It allows us to just have a pulse on where we're making progress towards our LCAP. The nice part about our district, and Dr. Breggy had already addressed it earlier in his superintendent's report, is our strategic plan really drives our LCAP, and so we're actually going to, instead of just doing a quick, here's where we're at mid-year, you'll get a series of, um, of, uh, touchpoints around the strategic plan, which then we will actually submit our LCAP on June 30th. Um, so that's when, that'll come back to you guys for approval. This is just a exercise in seeing where we're at at mid-year. A lot of work for nothing. I just, did I say that out loud?
For confirmation.
Yes, for information.
Thank you.
But it gives the opportunity for any questions around where we're at, at mid-year, and it's, um, I would love to answer any of those questions for you if you do have any.
I'll start with Mr. Halimi.
Yeah.
I'd say thank you, just, uh, I, I, you know, as I, as I asked, uh, in the Dr. Breggy's report, I did see under, on page thirteen, uh, 2.6, there was a call out again for, uh, this is under goal two for student and parent engagement. I did see, uh, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, there's, there's just a line item there. Again, I would just ask, because it's, you know, becoming a sensitive topic with people in the community and whatnot, I would ask that, you know, before we, uh, go through and, and spend the dollars, we just understand what, what, what we're getting for it and just make sure that it reflects values that we're all comfortable with.
Absolutely. And, um, uh, Mr. Halimi, we created our strategic pla, our LCAP based off of our strategic plan. So we did, um, a whole series of about a year and a half of focus groups, and that's where that came from. So everything that you'll see in our LCAP will be reflected of our strategic plan. So that's why you'll see, but you do see in there, at our mid-year, we have spent zero dollars in that account at this time. Yep, perfect.
So I should, I should probably go back and review that strategic plan then to better understand it. Thank you.
Mr. Raymer?
Yes. Oh, one question about the, I know in the past for the strategic plan and for the LCAP, um, there have been student-focused groups essentially that you've just, uh, talked to to, to help form those. When do you think that you'll start reaching out to both students and just focus groups like that in general?
So for our strategic plan, because we're in year two, we'll be moving into year three, uh, we as a cabinet will probably, um, have to bring to the Board of Education another proposal as, where are we going to shift from year three into our new strategic plan? Um, and how will we start to seek that feedback from the community, parent support, uh, PTA, PTSAs, Title I, uh, DLEC, which is a district EL program? So all those that are at the front of our strategic plan, uh, we will have to start figuring out a plan of, um, getting all that feedback back. Uh, you know, Ms. Marcus was a part of it, Mr. Margot, they all experienced all the focus groups at the time, and, um, we'll have to reinstitute those probably by next year at some point.
Just a correction. Correction. Dustin, correction, I was not part of the committee. Was not part of the strategic plan.
Oh, I thought, uh, one of the things we did was, we brought Bonnie McFarlane. She met with each of the board members individually. Yep, yep. And then, uh, Ms. Marcus was part of, uh, one of the groups as well.
I, I'd just like to say that by using the strategic plan as the way of, uh, presenting the LCAP, it keeps us focused to implement and achieve and assess how well we're doing with it, and I think that's the most important thing here, is that we are able to go back and look and see where we can make improvements and so on. So I, I mean, this takes a tremendous amount of work, and I really applaud you for doing this, and I know when it comes out in the end of the year, it's gonna be really a great report. So thank you very much, Dustin.
Dr. Stern?
Thank you, no comments at this time.
All right, thank you so much, Dustin. I, I really appreciate all the work, and, um, especially during these times right now, it just seems like there is this, an, an unrelenting amount of work for everything, and it always just, uh, amazes me that these, these still come through. So thank you very much, and I really liked, uh, appreciated looking at it.
Yep.
Good point.
Yep, and, uh, for anybody that wants to reference not only these plans, these plans will be posted in the Ed Services that are also on the board agenda, but then our strategic plan is on the main page of our website on the right side toolbar. So you can see that there as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the Board Policies. I think I actually just skipped something. Thirteen B, Discussion Implementing Universal Transition Kindergarten. And, um, Dr. Breggy, I'll let you start this.
So we've shared with you, uh, the policy, and we've shared the, um, the, the, the actual policy, the CSBA policy, um, and then the recommended policy. And, um, and that is, you know, the cabinet recommendation. And um, and that is, you know, the cabinet recommendation in there for the policy change. But certainly up for some board discussion.
Mr. Margot, would you like to start?
I was gonna, what I was gonna do is since we're gonna have a discussion anyway, I'd like to put the uh, motion on the floor. And then we can continue the conversation. So I'll make a motion for the second reading of Board Policy six one seven zero point one, Transitional Kindergarten.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Raymer and we'll continue on with our conversation. Did you have anything else to add, Mr. Margot?
No, I did not. I just wanted to put the motion on the floor and then we can go around if people wanna discuss.
Um, Mr. Halimi?
I don't, I don't think at this time.
Mr. Raymer?
Nothing from me.
Mrs. Marcus?
No, I'm good to go.
Dr. Stern? Okay, um, I would just like to say I'm really excited about adding uh, these TK grades uh, to our, our program. I'm really looking forward to uh, having a more fully developed early education program. And um, we had a study session to discuss this and went deeper into the program and, and the, not just uh, how that would look and, and professional development and uh, as well as operational costs. And I think it's really exciting uh, for all of us and for our school district. So I am applaud all of the work that went into this. I know that it was uh, a lot of commitment on everybody's part as uh, Dr. Braggie mentioned earlier. And thank you Mr. Bugby and Ms. Kaber as well, uh, to help make this happen so that we have this available in time for enrollment, which uh, is now been pushed back one day just so we could do this. So uh, if nobody else has any other comments or discussion, I'd like to call for the vote for the um, second reading of the Board Policy six one seven zero dot one, Transitional Kindergarten. A roll call vote, sounds wonderful. Uh, I will start with Mr. Raymer.
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And myself as a yes, so the motion passes five zero with a provisional vote from Mr. Raymer. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Three hours and fifteen minutes to go before that open enrollment. Just under the wire, guys. Got it in.
Seriously, thank you very much for all of that hard work. The next item on our agenda is Board, um, sorry Personnel Services fifteen A Approval of Ratified Tentative Agreement by Beverly Hills Chapter Number Three Two Eight, California School Employees Association, CSEA. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, the motion uh, has been made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. Any comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero with provisional vote from Mr. Raymer. Uh, the next item is...
I'll, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two nineteen, Resolution of the Board of Education of Beverly Hills Unified School District, Authorizing the Issuance of BHUSD Election of Twenty Eighteen General Obligation Bonds Series B and Action Related There Too.
I'll second. That motion uh, was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Marcus?
Is there anybody else who wants to make a comment? No?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I'm just curious if there's any risk to the district financially or otherwise in terms of issuing the, the remainder of the bonds?
So risk is a very loaded... Uh, the, the... Finance Committee believes it's a good time to, to issue these bonds. Uh, even with the market rates going up a little bit, they're still historically low. And there is a need for cash for the projects uh, in the, in the, in the works right now. So uh, we're, we're all excited about issuing these bonds and continuing the work. Thank you.
Mrs. Marcus?
Uh, I would just like to make one little comment uh, and sort of uh, to make sure it's understood that the apportionment of the taxable and the non-taxable amount was set between one hundred and ten thousand and, I mean, one hundred and ten million and a hundred and fifteen million for the two. But that is not etched in stone. That particular amount of money can be designated when we come near the time to actually sell the bonds. So that that, and those numbers are not etched right now. I just wanted to make sure that that's correct as I, as I recall from the presentation.
That is correct. We still have about three weeks to decide.
Mr. Margot?
Thank you. Um, just, just a quick comment. I know that we had um, taken the um, CCAC report off the agenda. Tonight, as the time constraint did not allow them to um, present, I, hopefully we can get this presentation in front of the board either by study session or at the next meeting. Um, I think it all ties into both the demographic report and this bond issuance. So um, I think that's important for the board to get this information and the community get this information as soon as possible. Um, cause like I said, everything uh, is not operating in a vacuum here. So we, we need to kinda get a, a complete picture of how all of this is tying together.
Um, well, I'd just like to thank you for shepherding this through, um, Wade and really keeping your eye on this and getting it through the Finance Committee and allowing them to have time to really think about that, this. I know it's been more than one meeting with them and I really appreciate the recommendation. And uh, one thing that I would point out that both the taxable and the non-taxable uh, bonds are at a lower rate than our previous issue of non-taxable bonds. So this is a really great opportunity for us and thank you for making this happen. I really appreciate it. Uh, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the motion, the uh, the motion carries five zero with a provisional vote from Mr. Raymer. May I have a motion for...
Yes, you may. I'll make an approval to replace and purchase classroom document cameras from CDW dash G at BHHS.
I'll second.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by uh, Mr. Halimi. Any questions or comments?
I did have a question. Um, and I had asked um, staff this question and I would like further elaboration. Um, thank you David for being here. The, the thing that I want to be cautious of, and I know that we don't, we don't outfit our classrooms based on the teachers. We outfit our classroom based on program. But I wanna make sure that this technology is being utilized majority. I know not every teacher's gonna use everything every day, I understand that. But I wanna make sure, cause I had asked if there was any sort of um, data or survey done to find out if teachers are actually utilizing all of these things that we're giving them. Um, and, and uh, you know, spending taxpayers' dollars on. Um, and I wasn't sure by the response if it is or is not the case. So David, I'll, I'll shut up and let you uh, chime in.
I think it's a good question and I think we should always sort of evaluate uh, uh, what we outfit classrooms with. Um, document cameras actually are, are like overhead projectors. They're, they're, they're a very sort of simple technology. And i- i- in the elementary schools, teachers use them a lot because they, they can model writing, they can show how they're solving problems in math. Kids can see them up on the, on the Viewsonic or on the uh, or the sport throw projectors. They're very easy to use, they're not, they're not, you know, rarely do you have to troubleshoot a document camera. So, so they're, they're very reliable pieces of equipment. Um, I, I think the, the combination of the coaches um, at all of the schools, the emphasis on integrating technology and then just really providing teachers with front of classroom tools has, has resulted in um, a high level of adoption in our district, actually better than most districts I've been in. And when we do survey teachers about their confidence with tech, you know, front of classroom top technology, generally projectors, Viewsonics, document cameras, the whole, the whole outfit, that, teachers report that they feel very highly confident. So I, I think it would be, um, I mean, I, I don't wanna, you know, guess at, you know, how, how much adoption there is without knowing, but I, I think we can find out and I'd be happy to bring that information back to the board and I'll share it with the board when I give my technology update in March.
Thank you David. Um, I, because I, what you're, what you're saying makes sense about elementary classrooms really benefiting from the document cameras. Um, what I don't know is, does that start, does that number start dropping as you go to the higher grades? Do more people kind of rely on the Viewsonics? You know, are, are we, cause, cause you know, when you have a Viewsonic in the room and you get used to use the Viewsonic and you just kinda program for the Viewsonic, does that become your main go-to, right? And then the document camera collects dust. So, and I'm not trying to be penny wise and pound foolish, I'm not, I'm not trying to do that at all. I'm just, it would be good to know in, in the long run for the technology um, refreshes in the future, um, what's happening with this front of classroom equipment and, and how often it's really being utilized, how beneficial it is to the teachers, to the program itself.
Right, and I think at the secondary level, it's really dependent on the, on the content area. Um, I know math teachers um, tend to rely more on things like document cameras. Um, but, but science teachers, same thing. Um, we, we, I asked actually, when, when the high school came to me with uh, a request for some replacement cameras in the science building, I asked uh, uh, one of the I four coaches to just survey the, survey the teachers to see what the need was. And um, I had made an estimate of about fifteen cameras based on the number of cameras that my team were telling me needed replacing. And uh, about twenty teachers came back and asked for cameras. So um, so you know, we, we do have a number of teachers at the high school who are using them and who do rely on them. Uh, but I, I, I think as, as kids are more independent with, you know, devices at the high school and middle school and as teachers have more options for how they deliver instruction, cameras may not be as um, essential as, as maybe they are at elementary school.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate the uh, response.
Mrs. Marcus?
Um, I would just like to make a comment on the document cameras. As a teacher, I don't know Noah, if you were around when document cameras were brought into the, did you actually get to work?
My teaching career ended with an overhead projector.
Okay.
Oh, how I would've stayed on if I knew that was coming.
Well, I need to tell you that I found it very, very useful when I was teaching math during the last years before I retired, 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 retired. But it is such a great tool and there's no question. And, and the only thing that scared me was the last sentence in our uh, rationale. It's anticipated the district will need to replace approximately a hundred and fifty over the next two fiscal years. And that scared me. And I'm hoping that, that they last a little bit longer and that they don't need to, that there's more life in them that's still left. But that one scared me a little bit and uh, for the future to be thinking about replacing that many cam- I don't know if we will need to, but that figure scared me.
Right, and I think that's why I asked the question, can we really get a hold on how we're really utilizing these things? And if we're all utilizing them to the maximum, great, great. We'll be ready to replace them when they need them, I think that's terrific.
I think many of these are probably down there in the lower grades, I mean...
I, I mean, I dovetail on what you both are talking about. And my concern or um, the issue that came to my mind when I looked at this as well as the next um, motion for the interactive displays is that these items are coming out of BH funds right now. It's in your technology budget, I'm, that, that's correct, right David?
It is, it's in the, it's in the uh, technology bond budget. And I, I uh, made um, some educated guesses about what the replacement cost would be for the front of classroom equipment over a five-year period. I shared that with the board, but I'm happy to reshare it. And, and what, what I was really trying to do with the board on these items was to say, we're gonna need to replace some of these things over the next couple of years, just like we replace computers and other things. And rather than sort of bringing um, you know, these things to the board in twos and threes, I wanted to give the board an idea about what we might need to replace. It's an educated guess, I could be wrong. Um, I always like to sort of guess um, conservatively, sort of thinking that more will break than less just because the equipment is equipment. And then I'm always happy when, you know, people are able to keep things longer than we expect.
Right, and I really appreciate that. Um, I think the thing that comes to my mind is that, you know, uh, for teaching and the tools that are necessary for our teachers to be teaching in the classroom today, now more than ever what we're seeing is the necessity of this technology budget and how much, uh, how integral it is in terms of the tools that our teachers need to teach in our classrooms. And if we wanna be a lighthouse district, then this is absolutely an investment that we should have. My concerns when I look forward beyond your, your BH budget is um, how do we as a district set aside these funds and start thinking about this now? Because we know we're always gonna have refresh, we're always going to have new technology. And to um, really uh, think about that in the future and how we, we budget for these items within our operational budget so that we're always able to stay current with, with these tools and provide our teachers the best um, ability to, to be teaching our students. And that's the only thing I, I would call out.
And that, that's a great way to think about that because one of the best ways to ensure that teachers adopt and use technology is to um, ensure that, that you're thinking about and, and taking care of their needs, um, you know, as, 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 as they're implementing. So the training and the, the coaching is, is a huge component of that. And the other part is just refreshing equipment, you know, before it gets to a point where it, we're, we're sort of keeping it going, but teachers are very frustrated because it's not, it's not really working as well as they'd like it to.
Right, it's not a useful tool.
And so um, you know, I, you never know how, you know, I, I've been doing, I've been working with classroom technology for quite a while and you start to see trends. And, and one of the really cool things about what we have in Beverly Hills is we have a, a healthy amount of money devoted to classroom technology and, and um, ensuring that teachers have um, the, the basic tools that they need and students as well. And you know, it, given the amount that is, that is there, we, we, we should be okay for the next four or five years. So I think beyond that, we're gonna have to start thinking about what, what, what's going to replace that when that runs out, how are we going to continue to supply classrooms with what they need? And um, you know, that, that will be something the board will have to consider and the district will have to consider.
Right, I mean, I don't think we can even project necessarily what those tools will look, will be because I think things will continue to change. It's really about planning to set aside funds because we know we will wanna be participating in whatever that is that um, we evaluate to be useful tools.
Right.
Anyone else have any comments? All right, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. The next item, may I have a motion for approval for item seventeen C?
I will move for it to replace and purchase classroom interactive displays from Data Impression at Beverly Vista and Horace Land.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Noah Margot. Any questions or comments on this? All right, I will call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. May I have a motion for the approval of Resolution two zero two one dash two zero two two dash one, zero one seven, Continuing Authority to Hold Virtual Meetings Pursuant to AB three six one?
So moved.
And may I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, the motion was moved by Eli Raymer and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Wait, we have discussion?
Oh, any discussion, sorry.
Go ahead.
It's getting late.
I would like to...
Go ahead, Mrs. Marcus.
Um, if the governor should change uh, the uh, masking indoors and so on, I'd like us to make sure that we're looking at the possibility of opening up our meetings to the public attending them. And I really feel that it's time to let them come and speak if they want in person. So that's just a thought that I had, I don't know how the rest of you feel about it, but I think it's a close, we should be moving forward.
I was going to share my question, which is related to that, is what would be the ramifications of not supporting this resolution, Dr. Bergy?
In terms of, like, just voting it down?
Right.
Or in person?
Does, well, let me, let me back it up. If we vote for this resolution, does that mean we have to hold our meetings virtually?
No, so, I, I think one thing to keep in mind is that it, it still allows some flexibility for some of the other organizations that may want to, you know, keep their meetings remote. Like, let's say, a, a finance team or a, you know, it's still covered for other organizations, you know, other groups within BHUSD. That doesn't mean to say we have to then stay virtual.
Right, so I wanted to understand because there were, there was some discussion during public comment that was related to this. And I want to be clear that even if we vote for this resolution, we still have the flexibility to have a meeting in person?
Yes, absolutely.
And invite people to come to public comment here?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, it says must pass a resolution to continue to hold, but it doesn't say you have to hold them that way.
Right, right, I just. Right, so I just want, I'm clarifying for the community that by
I understand.
Supporting this resolution, it allows us the flexibility to continue, especially for our subcommittees to be able to hold meetings in, in virtually if needed. It also, I think, continues to allow board members who cannot be present, do not have to, I, my understanding is they don't have to post locations. And that's, that's sometimes important, especially if there's emergent situations and you can't show up to a meeting, but you can show up virtually and you haven't had the proper time to notify your location. We've run into that in the past, so I want to make sure that all of those are intact. So, just so, I think that, that at least what I'm hearing is that we want to move in the direction of opening our meetings back up again. I would like to do that sooner than later, but we talked about that a couple of meetings ago and I think we're, we're ready to do that. And I, I wonder what would be the processes because the next two meetings are listed as virtual in this agenda? Can that, is, are we allowed to change that?
Yeah, because that's information at the bottom.
Okay, so I'm just making sure that we all have that flexibility that the board may want. And, and it's obviously up to the board, but I think it's definitely a time for a change under cer, under, obviously, the parameters of which we are allowed to congregate inside. So, thank you.
Mr. Margot, I'm, I'm with you a hundred percent. I, I know Mrs. Marcus asked about this at a previous meeting, I asked about this at a previous meeting. We didn't get a discussion item on the topic, so I'm, I'm in, I mean, I'll be in favor of the resolution because it gives us flexibility, but I would just pose the question to my fellow board members while we're having a discussion is, are we comfortable with the next board meeting, you know, allowing people that want to come and speak in person, to come speak in person? I mean, what's, what's stopping us from doing that at this point?
I would say nothing would be my response to that, but I'm, I'm, you know, we've heard, I think, three of us are supporting that. Rochelle, are you more interested in, in doing the meetings in person sooner rather than later, or do you want to wait?
I honestly feel that if, if the thing is passed, what, the, the non-mask indoors, I would like to see it sooner, as like, if that's the possibility at the next meeting, I would like to see it as soon as possible. That's just my, I don't know if the other board members would be in agreement with that, but.
Okay, I, I mean, I, Mr. Raymer?
Just, oh, so it, this gives us the, the flexibility, the kind of a clarifying question on how much flexibility we have. Are we able to hold meetings where people can elect to attend in person, but also still have the option to provide their public comment virtually? Or have, provide the option for board members to attend virtually if they're not able to attend in person?
We, we always have the option for board members to attend virtually, used to be telephonic before Zoom. That's how far I go back. And it just has to be, the process is you have to post their address wherever they're, so if they were on a business trip, it would be, you know, the Hyatt Hotel, wherever they're staying, and you just list that. That's all, that's required by, by law, so you could still do that. We've always had that flexibility, this is just, technology has given us more flexibility.
Perfect.
Any other comments? All right, I'm going to call for the vote.
I think we should do it, roll call, roll call.
You'd like to do a roll call vote? All right, that's okay with me. Mr. Raymer?
Yes.
Mr. Halimi?
I abstained.
What did he say?
You're going to abstain?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Dr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Margot?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so the motion passes four zero with Mr. Halimi abstaining and a provisional vote from Mr. Raymer. Okay, the next item on the agenda, may I have a motion for item eighteen B?
I'll move approval of selection of candidates for the California School Boards Association CSBA delegate assembly.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Raymer and seconded by Mr. Margot. Any comments or discussion?
Do we know any of the candidates? I don't.
Just from their CVs which are attached to the, or their applications, sorry, which are attached to the ballot. So.
Does our, does, um, Dr. Bergy or the administration have any recommendations here, any thoughts?
We don't know the candidates either, so it would just be if, if somebody didn't feel like somebody was a good fit.
I, I would say, I would say, um, Gabe, just for, for past little historical reference, I try to look for a good spread of candidates throughout the county. We do have people on the west side here, usually it's iffy whether we have somebody on the west side. We do have that. It's also, there are six seats and six candidates, so they're all getting in anyway, so.
Oh, okay, good, that's good enough.
We could also write someone in if we wanted, but I'm not suggesting we do. Unless, Mrs. Marcus, would you like to be, to be written in as one of the candidates?
I'm afraid not.
Any other comments? All right, so I will call for the vote for approval of selection of candidates for the California School Boards Association CSBA delegate assembly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries five zero with a provisional vote from Eli Raymer. The next item is eighteen C, Discussion Board Policy, Board Bylaws nine thousand, as well as, I'm going to put these two together because they were really combined. Actually, I'll separate them. I put both of these on the agenda, so I'm going to start with eighteen C, Discussion of Board Policy. I would really like to, for us as a board, to look at our board policies and update our board policies. My recommendation is to have a ad hoc subcommittee. I'd like to be on that and I was going to ask if perhaps, I know Gabe,
I think Gabe wanted to do it, right?
Gabe had expressed interest in Eli Raymer so that we could take a first pass at it and then bring it to the board to review just so that we could expedite that process. Rochelle?
I believe that at, we were, or maybe that wasn't the board policy one, but wasn't Mr. Harvath going to be involved in that also and?
So, we, we all are because we're all updating policies in our area. However, I think it's, it's very appropriate that the board look at the nine thousand
Right.
series, which is the board policy. And in this small group, what I could do is, similar to what we did with the, the TK policy, where you, we can look at our current and then we could look at, you know, I don't think there's going to be a lot of recommendations from CSBA, but there's also the opportunity to then look and make recommendations that might be best for our district.
Right.
So.
Would we be violating the Brown Act if more than two members were on that ad, sort of, head act committee? That was going to be looking at it?
Yes.
Okay, that's what.
Well, I think, I think I'd also like to do is if you guys are going to look at the whole breadth of nine thousand, all of them, that's the goal, then on our own independently, we can, the rest of us can look at, make notes and look at it and prepare for the eventual discussion that will come with each policy.
Right, it's just to start the groundwork so that we can expedite it and then we bring it to the board so that we can all.
You're going to have, add Mr. Halimi, was it Mr. Halimi that?
Yes. And if Rochelle, you're interested in being on that as, as well, at some, we could split them up if you want to be on part of that and.
I would, but as long as you and Mr. Halimi are going to do it, I'm, that's okay with me. I will be looking at them and I did fact, look at them tonight or this afternoon.
Yeah, I have him too, as well. So I think, well, if everybody agrees with that, then Dr. Bergy, can we set that up?
Sure, yeah.
And, and we'll get moving on that. The next item for discussion is the CSBA Governance Handbook Review and it's really for our board. It hasn't been updated since I've been on the board. I know that it was updated just probably prior to when I joined the board and, as well as Dr. Stern. So I think this is a good time for us to update our board governance handbook at the same time. And we could, we talked about, Dr. Bergy and I discussed this a little bit, like, the best way to do this, but I thought it would be great for us to have a discussion. I know last year we had a, a facilitator, Deb Dudley, but I really didn't find that to be very helpful in terms of us really being collaborative in moving this board governance handbook, our, our handbook forward. So perhaps we could either decide if we want to take a stab at it ourselves first or my recommendation is that we have a facilitator and we really utilize that opportunity if we can find somebody that, that we like and bring that to the board and maybe have one or two study sessions to review our governance handbook and update that as well. And I just wanted to get some feedback on, from all of you if we should, if we can move forward on looking into someone to help facilitate that for us.
Well, my first instinct is to say that with tackling the board policy, the bylaws, that's, that's quite a monumental task. And I, and since the, the board bylaws are a lot more, let's say, outdated than the governance handbook, I would prefer for us not to tackle everything at once, take care of the board policy issues and then after that, move on to the governance handbook. Because we have, we have a lot in front of our plates right now. We've have, we have a tremendous amount of extra meetings, so I don't want to tackle everything at once. I'm not against tackling it or looking at it down the line, but I just think that it's getting to be, it's getting to be too much. You know, this is, this is with what, with all of the changes and even with TK, with, with COVID, we are called into, to extra meetings all the time and I just, I, I honestly, I, it's, it's a lot. So, that's, that's my two cents on it.
Mr. Raymer?
I'd somewhat agree with Mr. Margot on that. I think there is, the, the board bylaws are pretty dense and I think there is a lot of ground to cover. We could, if we did want to tackle them both at the same time, split into two different ad hoc committees, one dealing with the governance handbook and the other dealing with the board policy, although I know that you want it to be more of a discussion with a facilitator, which I'm also for, but possibly starting with a smaller group of, of two board members to look over the governance handbook and then bringing their findings to the board to then have a, a further discussion on the topic.
Mrs. Marcus?
Having been on the, the initial group that set that up, I think that a person could, if we all took a look at it on our own in time and brought up specific issues that we might want to address on the governance, there's a lot of, it's my opinion, there's a lot of redundancy in that handbook that we could make it much simpler because I'm a believer in less is more. So, I, I, I agree that we've got so much on our plate right now with everything that's going on and the changes and what have you, that to take and tackle another one right now. But I mean, I think if there's anybody that wants to read it or look at it and bring it back at another, you know, at another time and, and discuss some of it, I would be, go along with that. But this is only like, it's not, I, it was done since I got on the board.
Well, it's supposed to be updated every year.
Yeah.
Every time a new board changes, over, so I, we're actually behind in terms of updating that handbook.
Is that a recommendation of the CSBA?
It's in the handbook.
That it should be?
It's in our board handbook. So I, I, I think that the more, if the more we stay on it, the less cumbersome this becomes. And so it may have been cumbersome when you guys did this, but if we stay on it, you know, my suggestion would be that we, even if we had a subcommittee that then brought it to the board and then we met with the facilitator to help move that along. I don't, I don't anticipate that, that governance handbook is as labor intensive as the bylaws. That's why I suggested the ad hoc committee, but I do think it's important for us to stay on top of it. Otherwise, we just have these outdated, you know, documents. So what's the point of having them if we're not going to utilize them for our purposes?
Well, I was not overly impressed with the facilitator that we had as the last time. I didn't think it, that the product that we got was, I, I was not comfortable with it. I mean, it's okay, but I mean, I think that I could go through that and say, look, we don't need this, this is repeated here and there and everywhere.
Would you be interested in doing, being on an ad hoc and doing the first pass? And then at that point, we can get together and decide, do we want to have a facilitator to kind of bring it, to put the fine, fine points on it?
How would you like to work with me on that?
I keep shoveling more onto my plate, but I'd be happy to join you on that.
Well, I'm happy to join you on that as well, Rochelle.
Okay.
And I would recommend, just with the facilitator, because there are some things that are in our policy about doing a, you know, the board evaluation at the end of the year and there's things like that that haven't been done, so.
That's the one thing that I did want to bring up and that is the fact that we have never really done in the three years that I've been on the board, a board evaluation, which is recommended every year. So that is something that I do feel that we need to address very definitely.
I, I agree, so let's, let's move on that as well.
I'll be happy to.
Do you want to participate in that, you want, we can talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to be part of that and, and then also looking for a facilitator. I know that, I believe that Deb Dudley is, they've, they've moved people around.
Dudley is no longer available.
Yeah, I think that they've.
I think we should try someone else that maybe,
I think somebody new.
And, and let's get to that point and see where everybody, how everybody feels about committing that time. I think it could be more collaborative and more team building and more positive than our last experience. And if we make that as, I know we've talked about having some team building opportunities with this board, so that could be one of them and it doesn't have to be a labor, like a torturous event. We could actually make it something that's very positive and plan a time when we can get together to do that. In person would be really fantastic.
Okay.
But first, let's take a stab at that, Rochelle and Eli, and see what we can bring to the board. And then ideally, it would be something where we can really just enhance what we have and we can, we can make the updates we need.
There's, there's also a part from the cabinet that's in there, so we can actually do that. We can actually, you know, with, look at our, our revisions, you know, because it's, it's, we're in a different place than we were then, so.
Right, I think it would be really great.
We can add to our list.
Oh, and here, I forgot. I know. With all the bylaws. For Discussion City Liaison Meeting Update, I think I already touched on that. From my standpoint, Noah, did you have anything to add?
No, I think it was a very productive meeting and it was a good example of the city and the school district getting together and thanks to Mayor Wonderlick for kind of spearheading that so we can share ideas and, and there'll, there'll be a lot to report back in the future with the vote on the TK, universal TK tonight, that kind of gets the ball rolling. So, a lot, a lot, a lot of stuff to look forward to, so I appreciate that. Other, other things, President Wells' suggestions about incorporating city programs into our educational programs, art culture, you know, music, culinary, just a whole bunch of things that we can really start tying the city together. There was an entire art festival this past weekend. My understanding is that there were no art students involved. That was, we had brought that up and we're like, why didn't the art students know about it? It's, it's, uh, that's, that's because Eli didn't report on it, otherwise we would have known. But those, those will be opportunities for us to look at the relationship between the two organizations and do a better job for our community from all grade levels, really.
Absolutely, and I think one, one of the things we did discuss is about having, with the city, one of the next steps was possibly having some sort of a committee to focus on, one, the early education or the different facilities, that, that whole piece there, how we can partner on those opportunities. And the other was how we would move forward in, with the different schools. And the other was, um, uh, how we would move forward in, uh, with the different school sites, our programs, the program heads on, for example, um, tying together any arts events that are happening in the school or, or actually creating events where, um, you know, with our arts and culture and connecting them with our art students and, um, or other people that are interested in that, even if they're not necessarily art students, but they report on it or they're following, um, the business of art.
Right.
So, um, that's something we said that we would bring to the board to get feedback on if, if we were all, um, in agreement to try and set up some sort of a committee with the city to further explore these ideas. So, I did want to get approval, or not approval, but direction from the board to continue down that path with the city and exploring that partnership and, and setting up probably a task force, I think is what they called it. Does everybody agree?
I do.
So far?
Gabe, you awake?
Gabe?
I'm, I'm mostly awake.
Fading. Um, okay, well, that's it. I'm, the next item is communication from board members, so I'll start with, uh, you, Gabe, since you're fading.
I am fading. Um, it's, uh, it's at 12:30 here, so, um, a few quick thoughts. Uh, I'm sorry if I, if I don't make a lot of sense here. I am, I am a little tired. Uh, during public comments tonight, I heard, uh, we heard some, we heard some sentiments that I think were pretty troubling, and I want to address them because people ask for them to be addressed. So, the number one, um, to our teacher, Mrs. Chan, who was disappointed that we did not, um, address, condemn parents for, uh, for what was said about her. I'll acknowledge that I think the comments made towards her were unfortunate. I didn't, certainly didn't like hearing them and having that aired, um, uh, you know, at this venue. Um, however, because she called it out, let me also say that calling the community and members of our community loud and unreasonable and suggesting that they're prejudiced is also not acceptable, uh, from a teacher of our community to stand here and talk about parents in our community either. Um, and to also suggest that because of a, a number of public comments, uh, who I believe the majority of which were from our teachers, um, suggested that they were in favor of keeping masks and therefore a, a majority now feels a certain way. I mean, look, this is a very heated subject. We're, we're, we're holding study sessions, we're doing the best we can. Um, and, and I don't think that the comments that were made by Ms. Chan are necessarily helping, uh, the subject matter. On, with, with regard to the, with suggesting that people in this community are prejudiced for having an issue, I, I believe from the last board meeting, the allegation, if we're going to get to the root of it, was teaching about the Black Lives Matter political movement in the classroom. Um, it was not about whether we should have Black History Month or something like that. We've had Black History Month in this country for a long time. I, I don't think anyone has a problem with that. But the Black Lives Matter is a political movement which has a charter, and that charter has had anti-Semitic undertones. So, people having a, a problem with the discussion of a political movement with anti-Semitic undertones in our community, yes, people are going to get upset, and that's expected. I'm not saying that Ms. Chan did that, I wasn't there, I don't know. I'm just saying like, that's, that's reason for people to get upset. So, th- this is the part of the reason why I want to have a conversation about DEI in our community, how it's being taught. I, I, I'm very proud of this community. I think we do a lot of really great things, and we're getting caught up in a lot of very politically charged topics, um, which, you know, are being dealt with nationally. And, uh, you know, some of that is being seen in our community, but I think we can rise above and I think we can address it in, um, a better, more cordial way than, you know, we're seeing in some of this public comment. That's one. Another thing we heard in public comment, um, you know, it's, it's one thing for people to be upset about masks and the rules around masks. I'm upset about masks, I think I've made that very clear. I don't think we should be wearing masks anymore. But for one of the, uh, for a community member to express their being upset about masks, that's one thing. To say you're going to sue the board, that's another thing. To say you're going to sue individual board members in their individual capacities as volunteers for what we're doing for this community, I, I'd, I find that, I find that outrageous. I find it a bit distasteful, um, and I just, I just think it's unacceptable. Um, I, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm really at a loss of, uh, words for, for to that one. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll stand with, I, I, you know, many members in our community, and I will keep pushing back against, um, these, these preventative measures that I believe are harming our kids. Uh, I stand in, in, you know, solidarity and will keep having a discussion like that. But when I hear, when I hear stuff reach that point, you know, you even start losing. We need to bring the temperature down in these conversations. We need to stop pointing fingers, uh, at people, and we need to start making logical decisions, uh, for our school district. And so, I, I think we're starting to hear the extremities on the, on the both sides, and that's where I get lost. I'm very, I'm very central, I'm, I'm, I'm a radical centrist. I, I, I like to make decisions based on facts, and, uh, if you guys can hear that I'm a little tired in my voice, and that, that, that really hurt when I, when I heard those kind of comments tonight. Um, I do want to see this board continue to push to get masks off of our kids. I, to Noah, I heard you loud and clear, I'm very eager to hear what the governor says as well. Um, but, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I, I, whether or not our governor acts, whether or not the LA County Department of Public Health acts, I think we have to act. Um, and if I hear rules, I just want to, you know, share with my fellow board members, if we hear rules that come down that set one set of rules for people that are vaccinated and allow them to take masks off and therefore, you know, discriminates against people who decide not to get the vaccine, which I think is a very logical, you know, uh, decision that someone can make based on the facts that exist about the vaccines, I'm going to have a big issue with that. And, uh, you know, I for one, I'm going to push back. I will not, I won't stand for that. Um, I, I do think that we have failed to give Dr. Braggy, after he's brought it up a number of times here, I think we've failed to give him clear direction around the testing program, uh, that we have in this school district. I think based on where the levels of, uh, transmission are that we're seeing the levels of infection, I, I would be in favor in giving direction to the administration to start winding down that testing program. I now think it's overkill, I don't think we need it. We can always bring it back up if and when it ever reaches the point that we do need it again. But at this point, I would be in favor from, you know, for, for a number of reasons, including, uh, the financial and the effects on the kids to start winding down the program. So I would be interested in hearing from my fellow board members on that point as well. The last thing I'll say, and I'm sorry if I'm kind of rambling here. The last thing is, uh, unfortunately, I'm looking at the, the calendar for future board meetings. I have an international flight during our meeting on March 22nd, so unfortunately, I will not be able to be, uh, on that board meeting. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up. I'll stop talking now, thanks.
Thank you, Gabe. Um, Mr. Raymer, would you like to go next?
Sure, uh, I got a couple of things. I'll start with something that I've been thinking about for a while and I may ask, um, to be put on a future agenda, and that is the, um, sites blocked, uh, at school for, for students and for staff, for teachers, as well as now the inability for students to log into personal emails on school devices. Um, I think that those are just some, some issues that have become increasingly, have made it increasingly more difficult for students to access information, both required for classes and extracurricularly, um, while using their school devices, whether it be at school or at home. Uh, I think that some of them are a bit overkill i- in a lot of ways. And I've just noticed that it's been ramping up recently, so I wanted to, to, to start addressing that now. Uh, going on, uh, to thank you, a huge thank you to Mr. Roach for the time that he has dedicated to this district, to our students, to our community, and all the amazing work that he has done, um, in his role. I, he never, like, the, there was never any hesitation in answering questions, whether they be at board meetings or, um, outside of board meetings, if there were any things that I were foggy on, and I've always appreciated, um, that from him and just in general, the, the dedication and hard work that I've seen him, uh, give to this district and both at these meetings and, and outside of them. So, big thank you to him. He will be a, uh, definitely missed, and, uh, as Mr. Halimi said earlier, um, definitely leaving big shoes, uh, to fill. Carrying on, um, oh, this is something that I always want to do and sometimes I forget, so I wrote it down. Um, thank you, KBEV, um, because they're here as late as we are a lot of times, and they have school tomorrow too. So, thank you to them for being here this late and for, for keeping the coverage of these meetings, uh, accurate and well-done. And finally, if you're eligible, please get vaccinated and continue wearing your mask and staying safe, uh, where you feel you need to. So, thank you and good night.
Thank you, Eli. Um, Mrs. Marcus, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I would like to thank Mr. Halimi for reminding me, which is something that I was going to bring up today, and that was to revisit the testing protocol that we have within the district right now, because I think it does need some change, and I would love to see the administration look at the program and maybe bring back some changes then that we can adapt within the contract or to change the contract, so we don't violate anything as far as that is concerned with our partners and that, with the people that we have the contract. I do think that we could save some money on that, and it's not necessary. I think the numbers are dropping. I don't think we need to be as fastidious, should I say, in, in our testing program right now. I think there's an opportunity to, uh, re- revisit it. Um, I would also like to thank KBEV for their constant, uh, attendance at these meetings, and they have school tomorrow, and they really appreciate it. I want to thank them for their little message that they left me about turning my sound on and off, and maybe by the end of my tenure here, I'll remember to do it. Um, but this is funny that I saw that sign this tonight. But I thank my partner here for helping me remember to get it to do. Um, and also, I'd like to encourage everybody to please go out and see the visual and performing arts performances that are coming up, the dance, the band, the, the, the musical. We have such talent here, it amazes me, and I think that everybody should try to get out and visit and go see the programs. They are wonderful, and I look forward to attending them myself. So, with that, I'm going to say good night. I like to be brief. Good night.
Thank you, Rochelle. Dr. Stern?
Um, Gabe, I really, really appreciate what you had to say, and it resounds, uh, very much with me. Um, I, over the last week or so, I, I think along with other board members have received a lot of very positive, um, emails of gratitude, you know, acknowledging that we've been in a tough position and that we have actually thought outside the box and we have tried to go beyond our comfort zone and actually say, you know what, enough with the masks. You know, and it, it's become that now, it's almost like the virus is not the boss anymore. And we have really made strides, and in no small, uh, part, because of Gabe, you know, in many ways, you, you led that. Disappointing to find that a, that an individual, uh, tonight, um, you know, made what was, appeared to be threats in a way. Um, uh, I, I find that surprising, because as I've said, I have probably received over 15 different communications, whether they're voicemail or emails of positive support, recognizing that we are volunteers here and that we have sat here from 2:00 PM till 10:00 tonight, which is, you know, not, not easy. Um, but I enjoy it for the most part. So, um, that, that was, um, unfortunate. Uh, and also, I think that we, I, I hope it's recognized that we are rethinking things. Um, and I'm hoping that February 28th, that the announcement that comes our way is such that masks are done with. Um, and I also do agree that we need to look more at the testing program. I'm not sure if I want to get rid of symptomatic testing or direct exposure. I think those things, um, have a place, uh, but definitely we can, um, revisit it. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Roach, you fascinate me with your wide, um, your wide body of knowledge that I cannot even understand half the time. But, um, I'm very appreciative of how smart you are and that you, you have a great command of finances. So, thank you.
Um, thank you. Um, to Wade, why I oughta? Um, February 7th, I attended the LAXA, um, monthly meeting. Um, the, the speaker at that meeting, um, speci-, sorry, specialized in, in, um, implicit bias, bias, explicit bias, um, spoke about that for a while. Talked about how, um, the brain operates on a, on a, um, physical level, um, in regards to how we, how we, um, deal with those, those terms, stereotyping, bias and all that, and also talked about the effect of mindfulness and what, how mindfulness is starting to play a role in helping, um, students and adults overcome, um, some of those issues. Because, you know, we, we like to always say, oh, that's not me, that's not me. But if you actually look at what, what is entailed when you talk about bias and stereotype and prejudice, um, we have to be o- honest and admit where we have faults in those areas. And, and it's like admitting you have a problem in the first place, then you could start addressing it. So, they, um, they did a good job at presenting that at the last meeting. Um, I, I took screenshots of some slides, but I'm not going to go into that tonight. Um, to Farah, thank you for your kind comments. We normally don't get those during public comments, so we appreciate them when we do. They stand out and they do mean something to us. Um, to Amy Arabello, I apologize, the February 8th meeting, I was slightly indisposed after a medical thing, so I did not hear all of that stuff that went down, um, regarding Ms. Chan and all that. So, I have to, I, I did not react to it because I was not aware of it, but I will make myself aware of it and react in kind. Um, last week was Kindness Week in the city of Beverly Hills, and I hope that it's not lost on people. Um, the Human Relations Commission did, uh, as good a job as they could, being all over the city during the week, promoting kindness, passing out stickers, passing out pins there at the farmer's market, there at the park. President Wells was there, I heard. Um, and I think every, the problem with Kindness Week is that it's only one week, right? Kindness Week should be every week. We should be treating each other like this all the time, right? It's that spirit of Christmas idea, right? We should have the spirit of Christmas all the time. Um, coming from the Jew. Anyway, um, it's, it's, we, we stopped talking to each other, we talk at each other now. And, and I would say that for those of you that have concerns with things that are happening in the district, talk with us, talk to us, don't talk at us. We are going to be much more responsive, um, if we're respected. Um, I understand Mr. Halimi kind of reeling back at that one comment today, and I think we all felt that, because you have only been here a few months. I've been here 11 years almost, I've never had that happen. So, it, it shows a shift in tone in our community, and we have to say, wait, wait, wait. It's okay to go for what you think is best for your children. We all want what's best for our children. It's not okay to do it disrespectfully. It's not okay to posture and do it. It's okay to say, hey, let's work together, as Mr. Halimi has been trying to do, and find solutions and find ways that we can do what's best for our children. Um, so I would like to continue to promote that approach and work with the board and not against the board as we navigate through these things. I wish it was easy as us taking over total control of this whole narrative, away from the CDC, away from the state and away from the county, and being able to dictate what we want to do on our grounds. We are a public institution. We will do the best we can to restore normalcy as soon as possible. But I'm not going to do it at risk getting more threats from the other side, because we did it wrong on that way. So we have to understand in our positions, the limitations and the abilities to think outside the box and, and go beyond the limitations. But I encourage everybody in the community to educate yourselves as to the, the structure of how this all works and the position that we're in. And some of you have, and I appreciate that. And I encourage, like everything else, understand, we have to, we- And I encourage, like everything else, understand, we have to, we have to, as board, when we take a vote on something, we have to understand that particular item 100%, because in the end of the day, we own our votes. That's what we have, is our votes. So I implore everybody, please understand the whole picture. And finally, it was apparent by some of the comments tonight that the community is thirsty for some clarification regarding our construction program. Um, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think it is, I, I have asked President Wells and Dr. Bregy to get a study session in front of this board immediately, um, so that both the board and the public can be aware of all the parameters that are affecting our, our whole uh construction program, and that we can continue to make decisions moving forward based on the up-to-date information and not from uh, um, October, where they said that was the last time that we really got an update. So I implore, please, put it in the books immediately. Please get a study session immediately. Allow the CACC to come back, make their report. Allow TCDS to do their updates, whatever we need to do, get the finances involved, Mr. Roach involved, so we can have these conversations in real time to what's going on. Because we're looking like we're making decisions from four months ago, you know, based on information from four months ago. The community is saying things that, that, that are no longer the case. And everybody's gotta get on the same page, so we all understand what needs to get done and what this board, the decisions this board needs to make. Because things like traditional, um, transitional kindergarten, how, will start changing the conversation about our facilities. So it all has to happen together, not in a vacuum, together. So, thank you very much. See you in March.
Can I just say really quick, uh, the, the moment I got that email, it went out to get dates for, and, and I'm waiting for those dates, and as soon as I get dates, I will share those with the board. But that went out right away.
Then I would say that one last thing, if we don't get a study session before the next meeting, can we please have the CACC report back on that agenda in its entirety?
Well, I actually had recommended that the CAC report um do a presentation to us as the liaisons and that they do a shortened report uh for the board meeting. I mean, it was a forty-one slide report, and as you can see, we're ending at ten o'clock tonight. And I, I believe that, you know, we have our committees, just like Wade came and presented uh the recommendation for the, the finance committee on what uh we're doing for our bond issue, and in the similar vein for our other committees, in terms of them coming to present, I'm absolutely fine with them presenting, but limiting the time and utilizing the liaisons to be able to do that presentation. Dr. Bregy meets with them regularly, and this is a TCDS superintendent committee, where um I would rather recommend that we have the board, um, we have a meeting with TCDS as we had requested previously in terms, from a follow-up of our October 21st meeting. And prior to you sending that email, we had already had requested that we uh would have an update from them based on that meeting, so that your email was just further forwarded on to TCDS. I understand that, um, you know, the C, CAC wanted to have a longer presentation tonight, but that is not, uh, this is not the place for the, for us to have a study session embedded within our board meeting.
Then, then we should have a separate study session then, so they can have the time. We had, we had public speakers that spoke individually for six minutes.
Well, public, public comment is different than our facility committee?
I understand. I don't want to filter this information to the board. This is a seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty million dollar construction program. We shouldn't be filtering and, and passing on this presentation to different things. This presentation has to come in front of the board, whatever medium you think that would be correct. If it's a study session or another board meeting, that's fine, but it has to come in front of the board.
Well, I think we should put this issue uh to the board, and then we can have a discussion about whether we want to have this full presentation or not. It's not entirely my position. Um, I, my role as uh, as controlling the agenda is to not put a, you know, an hour-long presentation uh into our, our board meeting today. This is not a board committee. It's a uh Citizens Advisory Committee appointed by Don Blake and, um, and Dr. Bregy. So it's, it's, it's just a different setup. We haven't heard from them for four years. Uh, you didn't even know necessarily who was on this committee or what they were doing. Um, I'm not even sure what information they, they have from that. I'm happy to hear from them, actually want to hear from them. Uh, the question is about for our board, uh, do we want to have a study session with the CCAC for them to present their information? Because I think to, to your point, we're having a lot of meetings. If you want to have an, an hour-long uh study session, then I think we should put it to the board to see if we want to set up an hour-long study session for them to present uh their information, which I'm happy to do. If everybody is uh in agreement of that, or the other option is that they present it to us and they give a more executive summary presentation to the board.
I think judging on the fact that Governor Newsom is gonna make some announcements on Monday, we're probably gonna be called into a meeting next week anyway, over something that we're gonna have to address. Um, and I think that will be a time to tack on in a study session and, and, and let the, uh, let the committee um inform us.
Well, I'd like to put it to my fellow board members as to whether or not we want to have a separate study session um to hear from the CCAC.
I mean, I would, um, as I'm putting aside the, that committee for a second, because I, I do agree with some of Mary's comments about this is a committee that was formed by the superintendent and Don Blake. I don't think there's a history of them coming to report, but I am in favor of getting information to the board. Uh, you know, DeNoah, you've called for a study session on, to, to talk about this issue, and I'm, I'm supportive to have a study session. I just, I don't know if we need to hear specifically from that committee as part of the study session, but if you want to bring information as a board member to the study session for us to review, I mean, let's, let's do it. I mean, I'm, I'm game to dig in further, uh, you know, into an issue that you feel, you know, the, the board needs more information on. I, I, I mean, I've been very consistent that I'm all in favor of transparency and accountability with our construction program. So if we have more information to share with the board, I'm in favor of getting more information.
I agree. I agree, and I think we, I mean, absolutely, we plan to have a study session on our construction program. The question is, do we want to have a separate study session with the CCAC to have them present their information to the whole board? Rochelle?
I'd just like to make a little note of this. If we're gonna have a study session, I think that the people that are involved in this type of a, I mean, this information would also be that we should have the Facilities and Construction Committee, the board-appointed committee to be there, as well as maybe the Finance Committee, as well as the CBOC. If we're gonna have a meeting that's going to be presented and we're gonna get information, let's get everybody that's involved in our community into that meeting, because I don't think that it's wise to have the CCAC come before us and not have the Facilities and Construction Committee at the same meeting or the Finance Committee.
Which committee will Howard Goldstein be on in that scenario, the CCIC? Because he's the chair of the facility.
I'm just personally in favor of Mary and, well, you as, you know, president, VP, you guys both kind of figure out what kind of study session to have. I don't think, I don't think we have to figure it out, you know, here at this moment, but I do think we should have a study session on this matter.
Right, so I, no, let's talk about that, and we'll, we'll figure out a plan that works for everybody. I, I, you know, I do still stand that this is not at, at the place in our board, our regular board meeting to have that.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with having it at, at the board meeting. That's fine.
Yeah, so I mean, if they wanted to-
But I do think what Rochelle said, we have to invite all those committees.
Well, I, let's talk about that, but I think, um, I am, you know, I definitely would like to hold these meetings so that we can focus on getting the work that we need to get done, um, because they have been going long. Um, so, Noah, you and I will follow up on that. Um, the next item, uh, and somewhat along the lines of what, uh, Rochelle just said as well, I, someone did say to me that there is, the FCC Finance Committee, CBOC me- uh, meetings are not on our website. Is it possible, Rebecca, for our, those meetings to be available for the public to view without? Um, I, I haven't looked, so I don't know, but um, in a way that it's easily accessible for people that want to go back and watch a CBOC meeting or watch a meeting that's up and coming, because, or the Finance Committee meetings or the, the other board committee meeting, which is the Facilities and Construction meeting? Like how they do with our board meetings?
Yeah, so, um, we're kind of in a really privileged position with Kbev of, of everything getting uploaded for us. Thank you, Kbev, for doing that for board meetings. Um, I guess the question would be, which department is running it? So the great thing about the way our website is run is each department gets to, like, if HR, if you guys created a board committee that fell under Dr. Horvath's purview, then his HR team has access to that section of the website, um, to be able to update anything as needed. So Business Services does do that. I see that already. I've just checked on there. Um, so those, those uh videos are available as much or as little, um, as they're posted by the department when the department, um, is able to post them, to my knowledge. But I would have to defer to Mr. Roach for specifically, I, I'm not sure which committee and how they record their meetings and how that happens. Um, but in terms of the website functionality, everything is enabled.
Well, they all have to be recorded right now, so if we could just make them available, that would be-
They are.
They are? Um, then maybe on the website, you can put something that make, directs people so they know how to-
Sure, so it's right under, um, Board at the top, and then Committees. We actually redesigned this, um, after you mentioned this, I think, about two months ago.
I haven't mentioned the, the videos before.
No, no, sorry, the Committees being more readily available. Um, so, uh, when we did that, we made buttons for it. So let me know if that's not, um, working for the community, and I'm more than happy to revise.
Okay.
Right now it's under Board, and then Committees, and then you can just click on the button for which committee you're wanting to-
And then the video selections come up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll pass that along when people call me.
Okay, awesome.
Um, the other thing, um, I think that's really important, and actually wanted to thank Rebecca for putting this up on, uh, at our meetings. We talked about this. And this is along the lines, I know we didn't, we didn't have a chance to start the meeting with it, but I really feel like, um, and this is along the lines with revising our, our board policies and our governance handbook, I really feel like, um, right now in our community, what I'm hearing, and I mean, and, and we're already talking about it tonight, is that everybody is feeling, you know, essentially hurt and that the behavior in one way or another, um, you know, I, I think that we can all do better in how we treat each other, how we speak to each other, and keeping in mind why we're here and what our focus is and what our common goals are. And I think that's the theme that, um, all of us have touched on in how we deal with each other. Um, our teachers, our students, our families, as a community, I think we can all do better. I think that, um, I think we're a really wonderful community, and I think that everybody has the best of intentions here. And it's a really hard time, and we're dealing with really hard issues, and everybody's tired. And it's just, I would really try, um, my goal is to try and keep us focused on, on why we're here and what's important to us. And as we engage with each other, that, to remember that as we start our conversations, as we start these difficult conversations, to remember, um, how to treat each other with, with respect. Um, what is the behavior that we want, to listen to each other, and to really try and listen for understanding, because it's really important for us as we move forward and how we uh enable ourselves to be the best that we can be as a community. And I have all the faith in us that we can do that, and I'm very hopeful and excited about our future. There are changes coming. COVID is lightening up, and, um, I think it's all the more important for us to just, you know, refocus on what really matters for us as we try and accomplish all these many, many tasks that are very difficult. So, that's my long-winded way of saying that I really think, you know, kindness matters, civility matters. Our children are watching us, and we should all be our best selves. So, thank you. Michael?
Yeah, my only addition was just, because I wanted to address the, the public comment piece too, and, you know, and I think we can do a better job. Um, you know, there's a whole, you're talking about the board bylaws. There's a board bylaw that's ninety, um, ninety-three twenty-three. Uh, and it talks about, um, kind of, you know, that First Amendment right that people have to be able to speak. Um, you know, and there's some things that we can do better, so I, you know, there's some things I would refer everybody to just, you know, look at this for ourselves, because I think that there's some things that we could do to make it better and to protect one another uh to the best that we can without, um, you know, violating that, that First Amendment right. Um, and, and I think all, all of this is great, and I'm so glad that everybody said this, because it is about being treated fairly and kindly and, um, you know, and it was just, you know, I was listening very intently to what was said tonight. In fact, I started to even reflect a little bit about, you know, what that feels like to be at, you know, yelled at and people being unkind to me, and I was making a lot of, like, a lot of reflections. You know, I was, I was getting a lot of memories of, of that happening here, and so, um, you know, it isn't right. And, um, you know, there's some things that we can do better. Um, but, you know, we've all been in positions where, where that's happening, and I, I think that we can all make improvements. The civility, you know, policies, I mean, it's a culture change. We all have to do it. It can't just be a certain group of people. You know, we have to live it, um, and everyone's gotta buy into it. Not just when it happens to one person, it's when it happens to all of us.
To any of us, yes, I agree.
So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Um, well, I'd like to thank you all for being here again.
Sorry, Mary.
Oh.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Just, just the one more point. Uh, I brought up, and it wasn't really addressed. I would like to give direction to the administration to at least look at starting to phase down the testing program. Like, our, our, we, we don't have to do it, but I want to give direction to the administration to at least look into it and come back and advise us on how best to do it.
Uh, uh, do we have consensus, board? Yes, we have consensus. So, thank you. Um, okay, terrific. Uh, uh, again, on that note, thank you all for being here. Thank you for staying so late and, um, contributing so much, um, to our meeting, and have a good night. It is ten o'clock, and this meeting is now adjourned.
Happy Wednesday, Gabe.
It's 1:00 AM.
Thank you, Gabe.
See you, guys.